We are live.
All right, I think we've got our attendees coming in. So I want to call to order our special board workshop of Tuesday, March 29th. Can we get a roll call, please?
Student trustee Dana?
Here.
Student trustee Lira?
Here.
Trustee Boyd?
Here.
Trustee Davidson?
Here.
Trustee Dos? Okay, Vice President Theron?
Here.
President Hinckley?
Here.
Superintendent Wells?
Here.
Yeah, great, thank you. And can we get our mission and vision statement and meeting norms read, please, by our student board members?
Okay. The mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. AOSD is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student.
Our meeting norms are as follows. One, maintain a focus on what is best for our students. Two, ensure a safe environment for all views to be expressed, treating each other, staff, and the public respectfully. Three, endeavor to find common solutions to issues through collaboration without sacrificing one's beliefs and what is best for students. And four, make a commitment to effective deliberation, each one listening with an open mind while others are allowed to express their own points of view even if one disagrees.
Great, thank you. So we have one agenda item tonight, review and discussion of the Albany High School math department. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I move that we approve tonight's agenda. The Albany High Math.
I second.
Student trustee Dana?
Yes.
Student trustee Lira?
Yes.
President Hinckley? Yes. Trustee Boyd?
Yes.
Trustee Davidson?
Yes.
Trustee Dos? Absent. Vice President Theron?
Yes.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Our agenda is approved unanimously with one absence trustee Dos. And so now I hand it over to you Superintendent Wells for to introduce all of the great people we have here to help us with this discussion.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair, President Hinckley. Tonight, we have the good fortune to have our teachers and our high school principal Derek McNally helping us facilitate a discussion around math and looking at data and how we move the data forward tonight. Helping to lead that facilitation is our very own Dr. And Shin, our assistant superintendent, who will be picking up the torch now. So I hand the torch over to you, Dr. Shin.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Wells.
Oh, no.
No, 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 no.
Okay, and you sound like one of those rappers. So if you could just speak plain language to us, that might be helpful. So Dr. Shin, I'm going to go and hand it over to Principal McNally, who doesn't rap on the mic. So Principal McNally?
Yeah, thank you Superintendent Wells. Go ahead and just kind of get this up and started. So tonight, we'll be going through a lot of the data around math and math outcomes at Albany High. And also talk about some next steps and areas for growth as well. Julie, could we go ahead and get the items up and then we can go from there? With me tonight from the high school is Marguerite Buckbauer and Annie J. Fishburg, who are our co-chairs of the math department at Albany High School. So we have a lot of things that we'll be covering. I'll be covering most of the data aspects of it. And then the conversation on the program and the aspects of the math department or math program covered by the math department chairs. So let's go ahead and just this is our agenda tonight. We'll be going through a lot of comparison data. Go ahead and you can move on to the next slide. So just to start us off, let's see, Ms. Buckbauer, Ms. Fishburg, you want to walk us through the sequence of math courses in Albany?
I can do that. This is Marguerite. So here is the pathways that we have, and it looks a little complicated with all these arrows going here and there. But if you look along the top row, that is our standard math offerings. Math one, math two, math three. Math three is the course that is necessary for college eligibility. We have many kids who are eligible to for college by going through math three. I'll tell you, this is, you know, as was noted, I've been there a long time. This is a little different from when I started. When I started, it was probably similar to when you all were in math class where we had like pre-algebra or some kind of dummy math for kids who weren't up to the regular freshman math. We don't have that anymore. And I think it is a success. It gets kids through. Many kids are able to do math, not because or unable to do math, not because they are intellectually deficient, it's because they're not mature. And so kids do mature throughout high school. And we do not any longer have kids mired in a below level grade math class, like in pre-algebra over and over again. Our kids actually see trigonometry and polynomials and upper level math because we move them along. So anyways, as you can see, we have math one, math two, math three. Ours are regular level. We have a slightly more challenging level in the plus course, and that gets them ready for AP Calculus. And then our very, very accelerated course is the math one, two, two, three, which covers two, three years in two years. And the sole purpose is to get them ready for BC Calculus. It's a small group. It's thirty-five kids or so. And and they move along very, very rapidly. It's not necessarily more difficult than the rest, but it is just so much faster. So there's our, there's our program. And go on with the data, Mr. McNally.
Yeah, no problem. So we have also just included on here some the eighth grade courses, which of course are not offered at Albany High School. But part of we wanted to illustrate is that some of the pathways actually start before high school as well. So next, I'll kind of walk us through the, some of the data that's been requested. So you can go and move on to the next slide, Julie. So most of the data rounded enrollment, we're going to go through a progression, kind of starting in the eighth grade up through high school. I know some of this was unfortunately put together in a slightly wrong order. So I'll try to sort some of that out. So this is the eighth grade enrollment. And this is current eighth grade enrollment. So one thing of note here is there's actually greater enrollment in math eight challenge than there is in math eight. There are some disparities in the math enrollment as well. With white and particularly Asian students more overrepresented in the math eight challenge courses. And Hispanic students represented more in the math eight course. And black African American students is a small population, so it's a little bit difficult to draw some statistical conclusions from that. But there is, there are slightly more students represented in the eighth grade course as well. You want to the next slide? So then this is our two freshman classes at Albany High School. So math eights, or sorry, math one. And just for some comparison, kind of to the overall school population. Math one has slightly lower representation of Asian American civic islander students. The white population is also slightly lower, slightly higher numbers of Hispanic and Latinx students. And then in the math accelerated math one, two, overrepresented with Asian students. Slightly, I guess, underrepresented with white students. The two or more races group is a little bit complicated. So I won't be talking too much about that. And we do have an intentionally left blank category. And then the African American, black, and Hispanic Latinx currently is at zero for those. Looking at some of the special populations numbers, math one and accelerated math one, two are, have more male students. The freshman class does have, is about fifty-two percent male. So the accelerated math one, two is somewhat over risen with male students. And then math one does have a higher proportion of low SES students. The EL numbers are a little small, but math one does seem to be a little bit overrepresented. And then students with IEPs, disabled students are overrepresented in math one. You can go on to the next slide. So these are then the sophomore level classes. Math two, math two plus, and then accelerated math two, three. So we see again, some of the same trends forming there with Asian students somewhat overrepresented in the accelerated math two, three. Hispanic and Latinx students and black students somewhat underrepresented in the math two plus and accelerated math two, three. White students, interestingly, are the highest proportion in the math two plus category. Looking at other groupings, one thing to be aware of with the sophomore class, sophomore class is fifty-nine percent male. So some of the gender ratios are a bit skewed. And then, but we do see here that lower SES students are a bit overrepresented in the math two program. EL students as well. But again, we are talking about some pretty small numbers here. And then students with IEPs are more likely to be in the math two track than, and they're not very well represented in the two plus or accelerated math two, three track. Go to the next slide. So this is then two of our three junior classes. So I just not to kind of over hit this point too much, but we see some of these same trends here with Asian and white students being a bit overrepresented in some of the accelerated tracks. In the math two plus here, we see something of a similar trend and sorry, black and Hispanic students being overrepresented in the math three track. Looking at the kind of groupings on the bottom here, students with IEPs, again, a bit overrepresented in the math three. And then the, just looking at the gender ratios, the junior classes have almost exactly fifty-fifty male, female. So we do see a slight overrepresentation of male students in math three, but definitely more female students in math three plus. And you can go, and then again, looking at low SES, but overrepresented in the math three as opposed to three plus. Want to the next slide? So one thing here, I actually want to call out first, the pre-calculus honors, because the pre-calculus honors really actually should have been on the previous slide. Because pre-calculus honors is actually a junior class. So again, like we see on that most accelerated track designed to lead to BC Calculus, overrepresented with Asian civic islander students. And then underrepresented with black and Hispanic students. Julie, could you actually move to the next slide? I want to talk about pre-calculus honors a little bit more before coming back to this. So then some of the same trends we've seen before. Our current pre-calculus honors is over risen with female students. That is a little bit of a deviation from the trends we've had in the past. And it is, low SES students are underrepresented in the pre-calculus honors. Julie, could you actually go back to the previous slide? So the other four courses on here are our senior courses. Calculus AB, calculus BC, pre-calculus, and then statistics AP. Those are our four senior classes. So again, what we see is at the more rigorous courses like calculus BC, somewhat overrepresented with Asian American civic islander and white students, somewhat underrepresented from students from other racial backgrounds. And then as we get into pre-calculus as an example, pre-calculus somewhat underrepresented with Asian American civic islander students and white students as compared to other groups. One thing to note, looking at the senior data, is that students are not required to take four years of math to graduate from high school. So this is not necessarily a snapshot of the entire senior class. And then in the statistics program, somewhat overrepresented with white students as compared to other populations. One thing that can be a little bit confounding in this, because we do have some small numbers, is of course, the two or more group, which does change from class to class. Julie, you can go on to the next slide. So again, focusing on the BC calculus, AB calculus, pre-calculus, and statistics AP. What we do see is that low SES students are a bit overrepresented in the pre-calculus course, but underrepresented in the BC and AB course. Of course, again, we're looking at some small numbers here, like three and five students. And a little bit in the statistics AP course as well. Whereas compared to pre-calculus, we see something a little bit different. And then again, looking at gender ratios, BC calculus is somewhat overrepresented with male students. Whereas AB calculus has a more even gender ratio. Go on to the next slide. So then these are the intervention courses. The math intervention one course is a course that is meant to be taken concurrently with math one during freshman year. I would really hesitate from drawing many conclusions from these numbers, because we are talking about some very small populations here. The other one, math intervention two, is meant to be taken concurrently with the math two course, provides supports for those students as well. And I mean, what we do notice in this data is, of course, these courses do have higher numbers of low SES students than what we see in the overall Albany High School population. And but it's a little bit hard to draw conclusions from the gender ratios or some of the other things. And it's a bit overrepresented with Hispanic Latinx students, who are about seventeen percent of our overall student population. You can go on to the next slide. So this is looking at DNF grades in particular, and where we see some of those DNF grades. So again, looking at math one, we see some of the same trends that we saw with freshman data two weeks ago. In the math one data, Hispanic Latinx students are a bit overrepresented as far as the number of Ds and Fs. We have excluded some groups of students because the numbers were so small. We didn't want to run the risk of actually identifying specific students and kind of accidentally sharing their grades. Within the math one, two, there are a very small number of Ds and Fs overall. So most students, pretty much all students that program are getting A through Cs at this point. You can move on to the next slide. So then looking at some of the same groupings with math, the freshman classes. And what we see is that we have something of an even split around gender ratios and Ds and Fs. Are socioeconomically disadvantaged, are a bit overrepresented with Ds and Fs in math one. Whereas the number of students with IEPs who have Ds and Fs currently is too small to really come draw conclusions from. And then again, in accelerated math one, two, similar issue, we have a very small number of Ds and Fs, which is making it hard to draw conclusions from that. You can go on the next one. So looking at math, math two, math two, three, and then two plus. The issue here actually is we have a very small number of Ds and Fs in those subjects currently. So the data is really not that informative in and of itself as to kind of what trends are present there. With really mostly information being that, you know, about sixteen percent of our students in math two currently have a D or F. You can move on to the next slide. So then again, breaking this down by some other special population characteristics. Male students are a bit overrepresented in our DNF ratios, which unfortunately is something we do see schoolwide. Some of these other groups here, again, we're doing very small populations. Can move on to the next slide. So then this is looking at, so again, we should look at math three and math three plus because of the junior level courses. The math two, three should be just excluded from this for comparison sake. But again, the number of actual Ds and Fs in math three is small. It's again about sixteen percent of the overall population of math three, so it's hard to draw some specific demographic conclusions from that. And then currently in math three plus, there are no students with Ds or Fs. Can move on to the next slide. Again, some of the same things broken down by some special populations. Most of those students who currently have Ds or Fs are male. So male students a bit overrepresented in that group. And again, no current Ds or Fs with math three plus. Move on to the next one. So again, looking at some of the special populations here. So we have a really small number of students with, actually, pre-calculus honors is the one to compare against in this slide, because that is a junior level course as well. So compared to the previous one, again, there's a very small number of students with Ds or Fs and pre-calculus honors, so it's hard to draw specific conclusions about that. Looking at pre-calculus here, actually see some of the same trend again. Very small number of students with Ds or Fs in pre-calculus at the moment. So it's hard to draw specific conclusions from that. Julie, you can go on to the next one. So again, some of the same special populations numbers. The biggest takeaway from these slides is that once we get into some of the upper level courses, especially the eleventh and twelfth grade courses, the actual numbers of Ds and Fs are quite low. And Julie, you can go on to the next one. So then this is the other three senior courses. Again, see some of the same trend I was talking about, very small number of students with Ds or Fs. So the DNF data is really only instructive when we look, especially at the freshmen. And this is a schoolwide trend. Most students, when they get Ds or Fs, it's freshman or sophomore year. As they get into upper level courses, it's much less common for students to get Ds or Fs. I believe in the presentation two weeks ago, we talked about, I believe, about three percent of the current seniors have Ds or Fs. So Ds and Fs are actually a much more common phenomena with younger students. And you can go on to the next slide. Right, and again, you know, I don't want to repeat myself too much, but low Ds or Fs, and it's hard to draw specific conclusions from this. You can go on to the next slide. So one of the pieces of data that the school board asked for was the class size per course. And I've broken these down by grade level. One thing I want to just caution about with this is because we have so many different courses at Albany High, it's really hard to plan out the number of sections to get things as close as possible to thirty students, which is why you get some deviation from that. So these are the current class sizes. The biggest one, of course, is math two, three, thirty-seven students. The reason for that is because with only thirty-seven students, it was either we run one class with thirty-seven or we run two classes that would essentially have maybe eighteen or nineteen students. So thirty-seven is definitely big. But this is kind of the balancing that we have to do to make sure that we're not having really small class sizes of our accelerated classes, which result in really big class sizes from some of our others. We generally aim for an optimal class size right around twenty-eight. So math one, closer to that, math two, just because the way some of the numbers worked out, a little bit over thirty. And then something similar with pre-calculus, a little bit over thirty. In general, we will have the advanced courses be a little bit bigger so that we can keep class sizes a bit smaller in some of the non-advanced courses. So Julie, you can go and advance on to the next slide. One question was about the drops that have happened. We have had twenty-four, so the courses listed here are only the drops from some of the advanced or accelerated pathways. We have had twenty-four students drop from accelerated math one, two. From two plus, we've had eleven students dropped from accelerated math two, three, seven students drop. And then in the eleventh grade, from math three plus, six students. Pre-calculus honors, about seven students drop. I did not include the data for the senior level courses, because again, it's not a requirement. The only one where we have enough information for real demographic comparison would be with the math one, two. The other ones, there's just too few students to draw any specific conclusions about that. So what we see is that Asian students are slightly overrepresented in the, both the drops and the enrollment in the math one, two, which we saw. Hispanic Latinx students, little bit higher as well with nine percent of the drops, as opposed to three percent of the students currently enrolled. Something similar with African American students. Again, we are talking about some very small population sizes here. You can move on to the next slide. So looking at specifically some of the outcomes for students when they finish the Albany High math program. So calculus BC is the most rigorous of the high school level AP courses and AP tests. The average for an Albany High School student was a four, four point one, three. That's scored on a scale from one to five. Anything that's a three or better is considered to be passing. It earns a student college credit in most situations. Ninety-seven percent of our calculus BC students who took the AP test pass it with a three or better, which is a very high passing rate, I should say. Calculus AB, the passing rate was a bit lower, seventy-two percent, still far greater than the national average. And then in statistics, ninety-one percent of the students who took that test passed it as well. Looking at the credits that students have when they graduate from high school. To graduate from Albany High, you only need to have twenty credits, two years of math to graduate. The UC system recommends student or requires students to have three years and recommends four. So sixty-four percent of our students finish with four or more years of mathematics. Twenty-two percent finished with three years. And then only fourteen percent with two years. So eighty-six percent of our graduating students graduated with, in excess of the requirements for math in Albany. And with the number of courses required for the minimum for UC. There was a question from the board about what percentage of students pass three years or more with Cs or better. That number is seventy-seven percent from the class of twenty-twenty-one. Which is actually quite good. You can move on to the next slide. So here, we're getting into some comparisons between Albany and some neighboring districts, as well as the state of California in general. So just in general, and this is based on the CAFSP testing, which actually is currently going on. This is an eleventh grade test taken at the end of eleventh grade. It is the only standardized testing in high school. And this is looking at what percentage of students are at or above grade level in their subject matter. In general, looking at just kind of all of our students, in Albany, seventy percent of our students were at or above grade level in the CAFSP. For some comparisons, in California statewide, that number was thirty-two percent. In Berkeley, that number is fifty-two percent. And in West Contra Costa, that number is nineteen percent. And that's of all students in the eleventh grade. So Albany is having a much higher outcome than other areas. And for example, we are doing twice as many of our, or our rate of students who are at grade level is actually twice the state average. Looking at students with IEPs, twenty-seven percent of our students overall. For comparison, this number is five times the California statewide average. And in excess of our neighbors in Berkeley, West Contra Costa, socioeconomically disadvantaged, similarly forty-nine percent of our students, more than twice the statewide average. And actually, more than twice Berkeley and more than four times West Contra Costa. Every EL is students who have ever been considered English language learners, including students who are currently reclassified as fluent English proficient. Again, seventy-four percent of our students in that category at or above grade level, which is almost three times the California statewide average. And more than three times what we see in Berkeley. And actually, almost five times West Contra Costa. You can move on to the next slide. Looking at some specific demographic groups. What's instructive here is actually some of the gaps between different groups. So in Albany, it's not highlighted here, but because of the small number of students, but are black and African American students. Our Hispanic Latino students around forty-four percent, white at eighty-nine, Asian at eighty-three. The gaps that we see in Albany are very similar to the gaps that are seen both statewide and in some of our neighboring districts. Actually, compared to Berkeley, the gap between our white students and other groups is actually smaller in Albany. But in many ways, our gaps are actually comparable with our students generally doing, doing better than some of their peers, both in neighboring districts and statewide. And you can go on to the next one. So this is a gender comparison. So again, same trends we see before, Albany students are outperforming their peers in neighboring districts and statewide. We do see that female students are performing better than male students. Again, this is a trend that was also mirrored in neighboring districts. It also matches the DNF data that we have. And you can go on to the next one. And that's actually it for me. And I'm going to go and hand it over to Ms. Annie J. Fishburg, who, as well as being co-chair of the math department, is also our McGregor math teacher. who, as well as being co-chair of the math department, is also our McGregor math teacher.
Hey, everyone. Thank you for having me. My neighbor is doing some construction right now, so apologies if it's a little loud. So I'm the McGregor math teacher. McGregor is a school within a school, so it's a separate high school from Albany High, geared toward credit recovery to help students meet graduation requirements. So if a student is behind on their credits for graduation, then the counselor would meet with the principal of McGregor, who's also Darren McNally. And they'll talk about whether or not it makes sense to admit that student to McGregor High School. And if they're admitted, they will take some or all of their classes as McGregor classes. This one is just focusing on McGregor math, but there is McGregor English class, McGregor history class, McGregor art class, and a McGregor science as well. The current enrollment in McGregor math class is nine students. And it's nice that it is that small, because it really gives me an opportunity as their teacher to really tailor my instruction to whatever math gaps they might have, whatever they might need to meet that graduation requirement. And so we do kind of projects as a full class to build class community and learn math together. And we also have an individualized online Khan Academy program that I work with the students to choose math topics that they remember learning in an Albany High School class, but maybe just didn't quite sink their teeth into. And so we kind of go back together and we pick things like that for them to to really master material that they didn't get a chance to master before. You'll see that in 2021, 2022, that's this school year, our peak enrollment was 11. It's gone down to nine, because two of my students have met their math graduation requirements already. And we're able to transfer into a different class to get credits for something else. That is a little bit higher than our peak enrollment for the 2020, 2021 school year, which was nine. And the peak enrollment for the 2019, 2020 school year, which was also nine. I think that is partially a reflection of the difficulties of online schooling for some of our students who struggle most with getting connected to school, having the tools that they need to be successful. When you move online, they're going to have more trouble with that. And the other thing that we've seen is that we have a chunk of students in McGregor who need a very large number of credits overall. And so some of the students, if they had only needed math, probably would have taken Math 3 for at least a semester to see how it went in person. But because they needed so many credits all the way across the board, enrolled in Mac a little bit earlier than they maybe usually would have. So that's a little bit about McGregor math. We can go to the next slide.
Okay, this is Marguerite, and this is what we have interventions and support. We have Math Hour. Math Hour is twice a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, from about 4:15 to 5:15. It was in a classroom 308, but after the Omicron worries, we moved it to the library. And so there's just a little bit more space, but that still is Tuesdays and Thursdays. It's absolutely, you know, anybody who needs help can come. We usually staff it with two teachers. And sometimes it's very, very busy. It would be nice to have more than that, but anyways, kids come in, there are some regulars that come in. We also have advisory and lunch and after-school meetings. That's again, any teacher can offer it. Advisory is Mondays and Wednesdays. For support, they ask for pass. We do have SEL lessons in Friday advisory, so that makes it a little bit a little bit tricky, so they don't have the full period to get help. We also, and this is, I think, very unique for for Albany High. You may not be aware that we have Math 1 lead teacher, we have a lead teacher for every course we offer. And for courses that have multiple sections, which are things like Math 1, Math 2, you know, many of them. We we actually have a lot of collaboration that goes on. And especially this year with Math 1 and Math 2, because we recognize the the learning loss because of Zoom school. We really had to redouble our support for these kids. We went back, we reviewed a lot more. We, in Math 1, we counted on so many things that didn't happen. So we had to make sure that these kids learned these things before they could move on to our regular curriculum. But the lead teacher is in charge of all of that. We have we have what is IBL, course design? To to make sure that there are more opportunities for differentiations. We do, we do, oh, we do have the kids are in groups. And we encourage them to discovery, learn, and figure out some things with group support. We also, this was a biggie, I mean, really, when I first started teaching at Albany High, I think we had five different tracks for freshmen. It was actually out crazy. Now we've got two. It might be feasible within the next couple of years to have no tracking freshman sophomore year. Because it really makes things difficult. For some kids, and maturity is a great barrier for kids being successful in math. There's, again, it's not their intellectual ability, it's just the fact that they can't find a pencil. So anyways, we've done that, and we've seen some strides there. And we do have two math intervention classes for 9th grade and 10th grade. Those are separate courses that kids are enrolled in. We have nothing for Math 3, except for, we do offer one advisory class that is for Math 3 kids. So again, staffed by two math teachers. So again, move on to the next slide.
So I think one thing that I would just like to remind everybody is these trends, when we see them, I think they can be quite shocking. But as, you know, professional educators, these kinds of trends are things that we see in education. We have seen historically. It is a society-wide, ongoing, large-scale problem. And as math teachers, it's a problem that we have seen for a long time, that we have been talking about for a long time. And that we have a lot of things in place that are trying to do something about these. Marguerite Bachbauer talked about a lot of those. And so with that in mind, as a math department, we're meeting all the time, talking about what more, where do we want to go from here, what more are we looking at? So we have a couple of future plans already in place. We are looking at piloting standards-based grading for some courses next school year. And I love standards-based grading. I think it's a real opportunity to help communicate more effectively to students that their grade is based on the material that they're learning. I think a lot of times in school, students can get the information that that their grade is kind of a value assessment or a stamp of your worth. And I think standards-based grading is a real way to kind of take grades into more of you know, this grade is a representation of what you have learned so far. And if you want a better grade, these are the things that you need to work on to learn to raise your grade. We have really appreciated this opportunity to kind of get a taste at digging into this data. And one of the things that we want to dive deeper into is to look at all those supports on the last slide that Marguerite just talked about. And to think about kind of how do we analyze how effective each of these supports are? And how do we figure out what new and different supports our students might need? And that, I think, would involve kind of a more large-scale, perhaps, student survey and many things like that. A continued development of individual and site-wide tiered intervention. We've started some of that, talking about Tier 1 as a school site this year. Some of the staff has been trained on what tiered intervention looks like and means. And we're excited about seeing that continue so that we can work together as kind of a more full school community to try to support our students. And then some continued integration of the social-emotional learning and standards into activities and into our curriculum. We've done a little bit of that in advisory this year. And looking forward to kind of getting that into our classrooms to really build that community. And next slide.
Okay, so we have, you know, we have been looking at this for many years, ever since I've been in at Albany High. It's not like we don't care. We really do care, and we see these as problems. We would like the math support classes to be fully integrated into our school support systems. Part of our problem is, you might have noticed that there are not that many students who are enrolled in our support classes for Math 1 and Math 2. Part of that is that it's a conflict. They want to take dance or art instead, who can blame them? But it'd be nice if more students were enrolled. Also, we would like to identify the students earlier from 8th grade, let's say, to see who would be who would benefit from our Math 1 support. And that goes to the next one. We want to prioritize the placement and maintain the sections. So we worry every year, we start out with very few students. And of course, you know, budget is tight, and you say, well, what classes are small? The intervention class is less than 10, ah, let's cut it. So we want to make sure that it's a priority. Make sure that we don't cut those supports, because they really need help. We really need to integrate more with our special ed teachers and the paras. It could be more effectively done. And we know that, and they know that, and we just know that that's an issue, and we will work on it. We need to have clear and conditional and consistent professional development goals. I like this, including anti-racist teaching practices. So maybe we are discouraging kids of color of joining our highest-level math. We would like to not do that, if that is something that we are doing not consciously. It would be lovely, of course, we always say, class size across courses, especially for freshmen and sophomores. My Math 2 has 32 students. It's 32 students and it's majority boys. It's a rough class to teach. That could be helped with smaller classes, really. We have ideas about para of volunteer support with Math 1 classes. Sometimes it works really, really nicely. I've had Math 1 classes with a para who actually sits down with a group of kids always and makes sure that those several kids, three or four kids, know what the lesson is. They can ask immediately questions. And I, as the classroom teacher, has a chance to work with the rest of the kids and check in. But I know that my sped kids are covered. They've got somebody who knows the math. That doesn't happen all the time at all. We've had ideas of maybe getting parent volunteers to come in and do that sort of a role. But many parents are a little uncomfortable. They happily volunteered at elementary school, but high school is a whole different ballgame. So we have very few parent volunteers. We, of course, also need more staff, I think, to track and support our targeted interventions. Because we have kids who are falling through the cracks. And if a full-time teacher has 150 kids and 15, 17 are falling through their cracks, it's very difficult to keep track of everybody. And, you know, same with kids who miss lots and lots of class. Because if they're not in the building, we can't, we can't help them. So anyways, this is all of our, we wish this would happen, this would help. And so there's our presentation. As I said, we care deeply about these issues. We've been working with these issues for years. COVID has made things especially difficult. But I honestly think that really we are making strides to to take care of at least the COVID issues. They have had some really significant impacts on our ability to teach math and what the kids learn. But I think, I think now that we're, you know, three-quarters through the year, that things are evening out, and next year will be better, and the year after that will be better. So anyways, that's it for our presentation. I guess as questions come up, we will do the best we can to answer them, right?
Madam Chair, President Hinkley, before you take over, I wanted to thank both Principal McNally and the teachers who presented the data today and looking at how we respond to data. And there's a piece of data that I would love to hear from the teachers in terms of some of the data we look at internally, one of which is the number of kids that drop a math class. And what kind of recommendation or support, safety net, might be needed to significantly reduce the number of kids who drop a math class. Because that's data that wasn't presented, but is internal data that we know occur. At some point, it's important to address that piece, because we want to be supportive of our math department, and more specifically of all of our kids, especially those who are struggling to the point of needing to drop a class. I wanted to put that on the table.
Did you want to? I guess I have a sort of a clarifying question or comment, which is my understanding, at least for the Math 1, 2 drop, which was the largest number of students who dropped, they're not dropping math, they're dropping down, correct? To the next level. So I think the intent of the question remains, which is, I think, you know, a conversation about what what types of interventions or supports are considered before that move is made. But it may be the case that in junior or senior year, there are students who are actually dropping math entirely and not replacing it with a lower-level math class. So maybe you could just comment on that briefly before we move to the rest of the board questions.
One thing I can just comment on that one is because of our board policies about outside classes appearing on our transcripts, we would not put credits on the transcript of students who, for example, drop a third or fourth-year course and take it somewhere else. So the fact that, you know, 86% of our students are taking through more years, and that's showing up on their transcripts, and the transcript data says that overwhelmingly, our students are choosing to continue to take courses at Albany High. Most of the movement, most of the dropping that's happening is movement between different tracks within the program. It's not as common for us to have students drop who are just simply discontinuing math, though it does happen.
Great, thank you. All right, well, on behalf of all of us, all of the board, I just want to thank, you know, this is an incredible amount of data. I know to go through, I've seen earlier iterations of this, and it's a lot of work, so I really appreciate it. And all the time you put into presenting all that for us. So we'll have a round of board questions and discussion, and then I know we have a lot of a lot of people attending the meeting as well. So we will, at some point, move to get some public feedback. But we'll start with you, board members, questions or comments? Yeah, Trustee Davidson.
Okay, first, thank you so much for this really thorough presentation and really helping us dive deeply into math. And I really appreciate that we're giving this time to our students and our community. This has been, and I've heard brought up many, many times over many years. So I have a lot of questions. So I guess we can just kind of ask them, and then we can pause, or I can throw them all out there. First, I'm just going to piggyback off of what President Hinkley just said. And Dr. Wells, just ask real quick, do we have any idea how many of our students are taking math courses outside of our district that are counting for credit in our district or are being counted towards college credit? And I'm probably most specifically thinking of children prep, because I know we have, you know, that crossover happening. And so it would be really helpful if we knew on that.
We don't require students to notify us if they're enrolled at Tilden Prep. They're not required to get our permission to do it. The only way we would know for certain is if they required the credits to be considered for, for graduation purposes from Albany High. And in that case, we would only put the credits on the transcript needed to reach the minimum to the two years requirement. So we don't have extensive data on students who are taking courses at others, other schools or other programs. In addition to Tilden Prep, it would be things like community college courses. I can tell you from system and paperwork, I've seen that the overwhelming majority of our freshmen and sophomores are taking Albany High School math courses.
Okay, um, so then, okay, is McGregor using the same curriculum? Because you mentioned some of the Khan Academy more like focused that you're doing. So are they using the same curriculum as their sort of overall curriculum? And maybe you guys could just really quickly just explain the curriculum that AUST is using for high school math?
Yeah, I can answer that one. So the, a lot of the McGregor students, one of their big challenges that they experience. Is, is just a lot of absences. And so using the same curriculum that Albany High uses would be a big problem because if a student is. Frequently out for a week or two and then back again for a week or two and then out again. They can fall behind if they're doing, if everybody is doing the same work, they can fall behind really quickly. And that can really lead to students feeling like they don't know what's going on, they can't do math, they feel out of it, they feel frustrated. And it encourages them to come even less. And so what I do with my MAC curriculum is it's, each student is, has a. Set of Khan Academy assignments that they're working on kind of at their own pace. And so if a student were to miss two weeks in a row, they would come back and be doing the same things that they were doing. When they last were at school. And so it's much easier for them to, to get back into it if they happen to be absent for a long stretch of time. Because I teach Math Two and Math Three at Albany High, I know what the comparative. Math skills are. And so I'm really making sure that in McGregor math, they're still learning the same material. They're still satisfying the high school math requirements while they're, while they're learning the curriculum in this different way. So that they, they can really feel more comfortable in class.
I really don't want to take up all the time, so I'm just gonna go quick with a couple. What is, what percentage of you can help me with this of our math classes, direct instruction versus group work? And that would be in the typical Albany High classes.
Very few of our classes are direct instruction. We do not lecture. This is a, this was a big change for me, let me tell you. When we developed the, the CPM curriculum. And the group work is much better, I must say. It, it is more difficult, I think, for the teacher because you have to really be on top of. Who knows what and what's going on within the small groups instead of just mindlessly lecturing. So that, that, I think even some of our more traditional classes, I'm thinking of the AP Stat and the AP Calc. They, our, our desks are in groups. The kids work together and this collaboration is a really, really, a really, really good life skill. Because no matter what they do in life, I'm sure they're not going to be by themselves talking to no one. So.
Barbara, you still talk a little bit about the, the mathematical practices and that thing, because I think that's. That's underappreciated as one of the really big shifts in math education over the last ten years.
Yeah, absolutely. The, the communication, the perseverance, the making a sense of structure. That is what we are teaching throughout all of our courses. Yes, it, it is part of the curriculum. And the group work facilitates that. And it was another hurdle that we had to deal with in. You know, our, our kids in eighth grade in Zoom school, they really didn't have that experience. And so we had to start from scratch and it's been a bit of an uphill battle, but they're getting better. Same with our sophomores. Our juniors pretty much can get right back into it. But yeah, this collaborative learning is, is really useful and I'm an old dog and it was hard for me to get my head around it. But yeah, I see the value.
Thank you. Vice President Duran.
First, I want to thank you all for being here tonight and providing us with this in-depth presentation. And, and thank you for answering all the questions that I sent you. I wanted to focus on really a couple, well, three areas, but right now I really want to sort of do a deep dive into the first area. Which is the issue of equity and our Black and Latino students, okay? What I see based on your data is that the issue, the problem starts in eighth grade. And if not in eighth grade, it may be in elementary school. And I think we'll have to look at data from elementary school to check it out. But there are fewer Black and Latino kids taking the challenge, right? Classes at math in eighth grade. So what does that do when they come to ninth grade? They kind of start out in not an equal playing field. And so I kind of wanted to get your perceptions. And, and I don't mean to put you on the spot and feel comfortable and, you know, whatever you say. Please, please feel, feel comfortable about doing it because we're all in this together. And we all have to figure out how to, to really work with our kids. So that, you know, they, they really will have a great education. So in coming to this issue of equity, for example, I'll give you a couple of examples. In, on the math intervention class, classes, the Ds and Fs. And sixty-three students are getting those Ds and Fs, right? In, in, in Math One, however, and, and thirty-seven percent of those kids are the Latino kids. However, only ten percent, I'm sorry, ten students are going to the class. You have sixty-five kids with Ds and Fs, yet only ten are going. I would really like to hear your perception about all the things that, that, that account for that. And so that we can really start working on those things. You've said you've, you've been working on intervention strategies for years. But they don't seem to be working in the sense that our numbers pretty are flatlined, I believe. If, and maybe they're getting a little better, but they're pretty flatlined in terms of Black and Latino kids. And I just want to throw out another piece that you had mentioned was about the CASP math scores. And while there were numbers to cheer about Albany in comparison. I go back to looking at the kids in our district that are not achieving, that are not meeting those standards. So the percentage I have is sixty-three percent of our students with IEPs are not meeting the standards. Fifty-one percent, over half of our economically disadvantaged students are not. Fifty-six percent of our Latino kids are not meeting those standards. And of course, we can calculate the, the percentage of African-American students. So once again, what can, we need to do a deeper dive now that you presented the data. Of what, what's going on? And, and I think we should look at three areas, the students, the staff. And the, and the parents. And the things that I heard you say tonight and respond to me was students often don't see themselves as math students. Students decide not to persist. They are immature. There is class conflicts that they have and therefore they're not choosing maybe wisely. And another one was missing classes. So those were what I heard tonight, which is the responsibility or the area of, of students. And then with teachers and the district, I heard, well, these trends are similar to school-wide and the state trends. And also it's hard to keep track of students. Well, I don't think that's an acceptable answer that it's a, it's a state trend. I mean, shame on all of us in the state, right? If this has been a trend for years and years and years now. So can you kind of respond? To what you as math teachers day in and day out, see both in terms of, of why. African-American and Latino students are not accomplishing to the degree and being as successful as they should be. Both what you see are their issues as students that we have to find out and talk to them about and also as teachers.
So I'm not exactly sure how to respond. I respond to a student who is not doing well. The same regardless of his race, you call the parent and you, you work with the kid as much as possible. You know, I'll, I'll tell you, it is difficult to talk a student into another math class. If math is not a thing that they particularly like. I've got a couple of my students in the math support, Math Two support. Actually, in both, Math One and I teach both Math One and Math Two. And it's just talking them into it, you know, perhaps they have to, as, as you were saying, they, they don't choose wisely. But I can't force them to do something like this. I'm, I'm very grateful that we have these supports. You know, of course, maybe if it weren't this period, it was another period or there were two different sections or, I don't know. I mean, what is the barrier? Personally, I try to remove whatever barrier I see, but I'm, I'm at a loss sometimes.
Nice, good. Before, I want to let you respond to the rest of her statements, but I just have a clarifying question about the intervention. Classes and, and this sort of path option that you're talking about. So if a student is enrolls, you know, they're in eighth grade, they enroll in Math One. And then, you know, it's November and they're failing Math One. And in order for them to move into the intervention class, they would have to perhaps drop a class or move a different. You know, swap classes, which would, I assume, be impossible. They'd probably most likely have to drop a class. If they don't have that period available, is that?
They don't have that period available. I mean, it is tight. I mean, we're a small school, but our intervention classes are generally sixth period. Sixth period. And honestly, our counselors do a pretty good job. They know a student who might struggle in, in high school. And they suggest, you know, student, you should not take seven classes. It might be too much for you. So often there is a bit of a wiggle room for kids, but. You know, still it's difficult. They get themselves established in their particular English one class or their particular, you know, some other class. And yeah, their schedule might have to be, might have to move around. And that's, you know, one of our recommendations is to work more closely with the middle school to get those recommendations. From the beginning and get kids in and, you know, we've, we've, we've worked at that and that's not always. As, as successful as possible.
So, okay, so some of these, so for example, math intervention, one class has ten students, so.
Most are all like fourteen right now, but, but still, it's a small number.
So those are students, most of whom enrolled in that class at the beginning of the year, based on a recommendation.
Actually, no, this year because of COVID, things were different. We actually didn't have many kids at all. Like two or three. I mean, it was, it was kind of a shame. But we Math One teachers quickly identified kids who thought, ah, this kid could use a little help. And so for those kids that are available, I mean, that were, that were identified. Like, for example, I have a class of twenty-eight Math One kids and I have four kids that are in the intervention. And three of them were identified early on, I think, by their eighth grade teachers. And one of them, I persuaded her to co, to move in because she, she worked very hard. She was just having a lot of trouble. So that's how it usually goes. It's, it's not as smooth as it could be. That is definitely something we can. Work on to make that transition better. But also that we have our other interventions which are more, you know, the kid needs to do something. The kid needs to ask for an advisory pass. The kids needs to stay after school a little bit to get a little extra help. The kid needs to go to math hour. I would love to figure out what it is to, to make sure the kid who needs it gets that support. But we have that, but it's not always taken for kids who need it.
Just coming back to your, your question as well, Vice President Duran. You know, part of it is for a long time, we've looked at intervention as very academic. And based on, for example, like an area of specific need. And I think one of the challenges, when we look at some of this data. Is we're not looking at it in the context of the whole student, which is why things like looking at numbers of, the numbers of Ds and Fs a student has is really. Important and really instructive and why looking at attendance data can also be really important. And I think a big area for us to go with our intervention is how are we doing things to message to students that this is an environment? Where we see them as a place they can be successful, that we, it's not just about the academic piece. Because Ms. Buckbauer and Ms. Fishberg, I think, made a great point, which is it, it's very different if a student sees them as a learner who can be successful. And so a real area that we're, we're looking at is how do we really serve the whole child from an intervention perspective? Whereas in the past, many of our interventions have been very academically focused. And, and that's really what we're looking at going forward as well. And it's why I think it's important to not just look at. You know, Ds and Fs in math in a vacuum specifically and really look at more kind of what's going on for a student. How are they accessing class? What are they, which classes are they choosing to go to? What messages are they getting when they're in that class?
I, I think I'm, I'm, I'll jump on and answer your question to Clementina and, and kind of piggyback on what Mr. McNally said. I, you know, I think I really see this as an opportunity to, to look at kind of tiered intervention. To, to make sure that we're sort of taking the responsibility off of the student and putting it on the school community as a whole. You know, I heard that, that kind of like list of statements that you read that like the, the students don't go to class, the students don't feel like they're math learners, whatever. And, and I think, you know, as teachers and as a school, it's really our job to, you know, if a student isn't coming to class. We need to look at kind of what are school systems that, that help a student feel connected to their class? That help encourage a student to come to class, that finds the student when they're in the hallway and says, hey, we care about you being successful, like come with me to class. That, that I, you know, we had that on there, not so much as a statement of saying, you know, the students aren't doing this. But more as a, a real area of need, like we need to figure out as a school community, how, how to communicate that to the students. How to help them do that. Because, because that is our goal. And I, I think it's a, it's, this is a really important opportunity for us to kind of look as a whole. What are all these different pieces of intervention that we have already? And how do we match those interventions with the students? You know, if there's a good chunk of students in Math One with Ds and Fs, some of them really need math intervention. But a lot of them might need other things. They might need attendance interventions. They might need a homework lab or homework support. They might need. Help with executive functioning and note taking. And, and I really, I think that's a piece that we've really been talking about this year is kind of. How to effectively match the students with the interventions that we need so that we can make sure we're meeting the needs of all of our students effectively.
Vice President Duran, did you want to follow up on some of that?
I'm gonna let that go for now, but I, I just want to ask one other sort of different area. Which is about the male students. Students, male students tend to have lower performance schoolwide. Can you talk about that and, and what you perceive? I mean, what your perceptions are and what we can do about that?
Well, as a very old, old dog here, that has been the case forever. I, I believe that biologically, they mature a little. I I believe that biologically, they mature a little bit later than our girls. And um, math one and math two, that's just, I I don't know. It's just something that that is is true. Usually, I mean, it's amazing, second half of sophomore year, um, things click in and uh, the boys who were impossible early on start to figure things out. And it's just that it's 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 amazing how um, how much goes on in the growing brain in those four years that we have in high school. Um, you know, they are children when they arrive and they are young adults when they leave. And it's just, just a cycle. So I don't know exactly what your question is, but um, or how to address your question is this, is that we've seen this um, forever. And they'll be fine. They will grow out of it.
Trustee Boyd. I can't tell if she froze. Oh, you're you're live, but you're uh, unmute. You're still unmute.
Yeah, I see. Okay.
There you go.
Yeah, something popped up saying you have been muted or something like that. Sorry, I just froze because my internet went weird, but hopefully it's going to be okay now. Um, I will try to be quick. Um, I just have a few questions. Uh, before that, I just wanted to say uh, to say thank you and um, to really acknowledge and appreciate um, our principal and our teachers who are here this evening, uh, presenting all of this information to us. And to just acknowledge that it's not an easy space to come into where there's a lot of um, of challenges uh, for people. And and there's, you know, a reason for for why this workshop is taking place on this specific subject. And I just want to appreciate the fact that this isn't an easy space to come into and and to present and and to appreciate your dedication to your craft and to working with everyone to to continue to improve everything and make it work as well as we possibly can. Uh, so thank you. Um, my my first question was just um, around, this might uh, be related to like the group uh, learning versus the lecturing that we talked about a little bit before. But I'm just in response to some concerns that we received from parents. I wanted to ask if if either because of the group sort of way of of working on things or for other reasons, if you think that there is a um, a possibility that students could be tested on material that hasn't been taught in class? If if that's something that you think would could happen, or if there's a a reason why it could potentially seem that way, if that resonates with you at all.
Um, yeah, I I can talk about this one a little bit. Um, I, you know, I I have a story from uh, when I went to college and I attended a class that was about uh, matrices. And I just like I swore up and down that I had never seen these things before. And and I went home over break and I opened up my notebook from high school. And there they were like in my own handwriting. Um, and and I I think that that occasionally there can be this stress response when you look at an exam question that it you just the words are meaningless. Um, and I I feel for that moment and our students, and I I think that's a real experience. Um, and I know it can be very stressful, but we do work really, really hard to write our tests collaboratively so that we know that the material that we're asking about are things that that we have talked about in class that our students have the tools for. Um, I also want to acknowledge that the California state standards uh, have standards in there that say, you know, use tools appropriately to solve novel problems. And so when we work together to write our tests, we make sure that the questions are only requiring tools that we know the students have learned and we know the students have used. But that does sometimes mean that that the questions that we have to put on exams are not exactly questions that students have seen before in their homework. Because we do have to meet that state standard of of giving our students the opportunity to use those tools in new and different ways. And so um, so there is occasionally, there will be a question on a test that asks them to take information that they've learned and apply it to a different situation. Um, because that is required by the state standards. And because that is how using the math knowledge that you learn in high school actually works in real life.
Thank you for that. Um, another question, which is also in response to just sort of concerns that um, were raised with us. Um, is there a like a deliberate desire in the some of the higher level classes or in different tracks to to sort of deliberately sort of weed out students to reduce the number of students who are in those classes?
No, it would be lovely if every kid who started in math one, two, went on to calculus B C. Um, that would be fine. We could accommodate that. So, no, we don't want to weed them out just for numbers.
Thank you for that. Um, I wanted to ask also, uh, and and I, some of this is through uh, comments that have been made just uh, recently in talking about in intervention spaces, in particular, addressing the whole child and not just looking at grades and and really wanting to sort of address um, kind of like in in the the soft spaces I think of, not just, you know, sort of number crunching, but how can we sort of help make this experience a better experience for you? How can we, you know, address whatever needs to be addressed? I'm wondering if in the classes themselves, because there can be this this stigma around math that some people sort of keep with them until they're adults and they're have their own kids and they're, you know, oh, I'm not a math person. I don't, you know, I can't really do math. Um, if there's sort of time or space in the the curriculum, you feel like as it's taught or in the actual classes themselves, where there can be kind of a uh, an attempt to sort of pump up students and and make them feel like, you know, they are math people and and kind of round out the the kind of hard edges that people can feel exist in a math space.
I know we do this. We consciously do this. We talk about growth mindset. Um, but that doesn't mean that it gets through. Um, I mean, I I know I've been working with that, trying to encourage kids who think, oh, I can't do math. Um, yes, you can, you know, and I I know we consciously do that. That's probably something we could do more of. We can always do more of it. Um, though sometimes the kids case, they say, you're fooling. You're just trying to talk. Um, you know, we have to be sincere in our belief that they can do it. And I know they can do it, but um, we do have to overcome some pretty big blocks.
I think that's the, if I can jump in. Um, I think that's the other piece that I really love about the inquiry based learning, the kind of discovery learning group work that we've set up. Um, is is that uh, the the sort of old school societal view of math and math knowledge is that there there is the teacher and the teacher has the math knowledge. And the teacher pours the math knowledge into the brains of the students and the students memorize it and write it down. Um, and that our goal through this inquiry based learning and discovery learning where they work in groups is that every student has math knowledge within themselves. And that every student has really valuable thoughts and logical thinking and ideas that they can bring to the table. And that when you all come together with the ideas that you have, you can together create the math with your with your friends. And that I think it really gives us as teachers the opportunity to walk around and just sort of support our students in this math discovery journey that they are on. Um, rather than than uh, sort of being the arbiter of knowledge that is handing down the right or wrong answers. Um, and it gives me an opportunity as a teacher to really celebrate. You know, any student can have a good and exciting idea about a problem that we're facing on any given day. And it gives me a chance to to see it because I'm walking around the groups and listening to them and then to celebrate it. Um, and so I'm really just thrilled that we made this switch a couple of years ago. I think that it's it's done a lot for our students' sense of themselves as math learners.
Thank you. Trustee, oh, sorry. Trustee Dana.
Yeah. Um, I'd just like to reiterate the appreciation for all of the staff that put this presentation together. Um, I know collecting all this data and and putting it together in a comprehensive presentation is takes a lot of work, so. Um, I'd like to thank you for that. And then I have a couple of clarifying questions. So firstly, um, the number for the students that are currently in math one, two, so that's two um, class classes in general. And then um, is thirty nine the current number of students or is it uh, the number of students before the drop? Just.
It's the current number.
Okay, okay. Um, that's good to know. And then I I just, um, I wanted to share an anecdote in response to um, trustee Boyd's question in terms of the um, the testing things that might not have necessarily been on. Um, that might not necessarily have been taught in class. Um, personally, in math one, two, um, there are a couple of times where I saw something on the test that was I was expected to know because I was considered like a student of that caliber, like I was just considered like a student that had the ability to self-study to find that. Um, and I was expected to self-study to find that before. Um, and so I I just wanted to clarify that and and share that anecdote. And um, I think it's important that we that we s- tell our students about those sorts of situations before um, they might appear on tests. And and I know that a lot of students were upset about that, um, because they didn't know to self-study for that. Um, and so that was just a concern that I wanted to um, share. And then um, also, Mr. McNally, you said earlier that um, classes in general, we want our classes to be a place where students can feel like they can be successful. Um, and especially in these higher level classes, I know a lot of students had um, mental health issues and and that was really prevalent. And so I I can, I see us focusing a lot on like the D and F grades and the absences and stuff. Um, and I I just wanted to say that, or I wanted to um, bring to light that another issue that students often face, um, even though they might have great grades on paper, is um, a lot of mental health issues from the pressure that can come with these really rigorous courses. Um, and so I I just wanted to, yeah, talk about that a little bit. Um, I know that we do have a significant number of students dropping from these courses. Um, and I do know that students that even don't drop from these courses have mental health issues. And then ones that do often, because I mean, these are students that feel as though they deserve to be in these classes. And then when they are um, dropped from them, it it's hard to like tell yourself that you're not capable or like have someone tell you that you're not capable of taking um, a a higher level course when you think you are. And and that can be really hard on the mental health. And so I I just wanted to bring those issues up. I don't know if you had any ideas around like how to how to mitigate those. Um, but that is something that I do see a lot um, in terms of like student complaints and and issues students have with um, the math department and that especially the accelerated um, pathways, having having been through all of that. So, yeah, hopefully that adds a bit of perspective and and I, if you guys have any ideas, um, I'd really appreciate hearing them.
I mean, one thing I've just just echoed back to something that Ms. Fishberg said, I think. Um, and I think something's really important is student self-concept is a really big deal. And just as we talked about student self-concept for kind of getting them into certain courses, part of what also happens too, I think that's that can be tragic is students really feel like they have to perform at a certain level or do certain things to, or they don't, or they they feel invalidated as a person. And I think that can be a really significant challenge for those students as well. And I think it comes back to a much bigger question for us as a school is how do we kind of make all students really honestly decide what their focuses and their passions are and what they want to focus on and and really do well in? Um, you know, I think we talked a lot about, you know, it says an example for some things with math courses. Um, I would really love to see students that don't go to community college and take other kinds of math courses other than what we offer here at Albany High School, instead of just trying to accelerate through one given sequence. Um, and I think that's part of it in some of those mental health challenges is um, how much are students really taking on something that may not be what's best for them? Based on their concept of kind of this is what I have to do to be this, you know, to so that it can be quote unquote, smart or something like that. And I think that's a really big, really big topic for us as a school that we're challenging. And I think a really big driver of a lot of mental health concerns um, nationwide.
Yeah, I I would echo what what Mr. McNally said. And and I think I would ask also add, you know, there there are studies, we do know that tracking is bad for students' self-concept. It's bad for students' self-concept and self-esteem when they get placed in the highest track. And it's bad for their self-concept and self-esteem when they get placed in the lower track. And I think that that is a good uh, chunk of why we've been working to reduce tracking, particularly for freshmen and sophomores. And and I think it's a good reason to to kind of look at at the tracking that we have and decide if it if it is actually serving our students or not.
Trustee Davidson.
Um, okay, just to follow up my questions before, um, and these follow up with what you guys said just a few minutes ago, I'd love to know what professional development is happening um, on sort of a continuing basis, other than just the collaboration within the department specifically around implementing this curriculum. Um, and I'd also really like to know how we're preparing for learning, because this is not um, the same as the learning that they're experiencing in their other classes. Uh, so I think that this this is a deeper discussion of.
I'll turn off my.
Okay, um, uh, uh, of how we do collaborative learning with students. And there needs to be a lot of preparation for them to understand just what trustee Dana said, their role in it and the teacher's role in it and how it's facilitated. And if the students don't understand what their role is or cannot manage that role, and this is the only type of curriculum we're offering, that that seems to be a challenge. Um, so I would just wonder how we could look at addressing that and and hear a little bit more about that. Um, one other just real quick thing, and this was brought up before, that there's some communication between the high school math department and the middle school math department. But what we've noticed is that we're seeing our Ds and Fs at sixth grade and at ninth grade. And so that's every time our kids are making a leap. And so I'm wondering um, how much we're kind of shifting back and forth between our school sites. I mean, we don't have that many. We keep saying we're a small district. It's small numbers of kids. So, you know, I'm wondering if part of our professional development could be that our high school math teachers are observing in our middle school classes and our middle school math teachers are observing in our high school classes so that everybody knows kind of what we is.
Good idea. Let's do it.
And what's happened? Yeah, can we please? And the last thing I'm going to say is I'm really in support of this push-in support with the Paris um, that Ms. Buckbauer brought up before has worked. I just, um, another district I just read about today like changed everything for their intervention and supports and really focused in on this. And the students were really receptive to it and felt really successful and the teachers felt really empowered. So I would love, you know, wherever that's possible. I know there's a cost associated that we really look at that. Sorry for all that coming out really fast.
I mean, I can just go to your to one part, um, the school wide piece. And I think as a school and a education in general, uh, in the past twenty plus years has moved to much more collaborative models of instruction. You know, my training was as a science teacher. And I can say that what is uh, considered good practice in the science classroom today is very close to what Ms. Buckbauer and Ms. Fishberg talk about um, in math courses and extremely different than what I got in high school. Um, and if you really go into most Albany High School classes, you're not that likely to see a teacher in the front writing things on the board that students are expected to put onto a piece of paper. That the movement towards collaborative models um, and much more student centered models is something we've been doing schoolwide. Um, they'll spend a big part of a change in the English curriculum as well as part of Common Core and some of those other changes. So a a lot of the changes that are being discussed here as math changes really are in some ways tectonic shifts that have been having, happening in education to also better represent what the real world look like, looks like for college and career readiness for students. But I'll let Ms. Fishberg and um, Ms. Buckbauer talk about specifics for the math program.
Can I just super quick ask on that? Is our assessments aligned then with that in math? And because I know that in other subjects, you know, maybe it's easier to do that. But do you guys feel like our math assessments then are really assessing collaborative?
So, yes, so that that's, this is how the the collaborative math assessments work in almost all of our uh, subjects now. Um, we give group tests before the individual tests. And the group tests are the best thing ever. You know, they're really not worth that much of a student's grade, but it's called a team test and the four kids work on every problem. But it's called a team test and the four kids work on every problem together. And it is, I I I don't see, I mean, you guys ought to come and see them do these. Tests, you can see them talking about math, you can see them helping each other. It's the way it ought to be. It's the way every lesson should be. Every lesson isn't quite as good as this, but the group tests do it. And we usually take um advantage of this and ask harder questions on group tests. At least I know I do, is you ask them the more tricky, the more challenging, because you have four brains working on it. Everybody gets the same group grade. And and so that is one of our bits of assessment. But then we do have individual tests and the kid has to show that he can do it without the help of a friend. That they in fact can do it by themselves. And that's, you know. That still is a large part of their grade because we do have to measure how much a student knows and can do. Individually, but yeah, part of their grade is the collaborative test-taking.
Thank you.
Margaret, can you also talk about um kind of some of the ongoing training and support that happens? Like, for example, when a new teacher comes into the math department? How do they learn to do some of these things?
So we don't have, I mean, it's not an official training, but we absolutely take them under our wing and we show them the math way. Um, we don't have teachers who just go off on their own and and do their own thing. Um, we must, you know, we teach collaboratively and we. You know, we grade the same. We make sure that um, you know, we we align our grade books the same way because it's no. It's no fair. It's no good if a math one teacher, if 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 the education a math one kid gets from one teacher is different from another. Because they're all going to go on to math three, so. I don't know if that's what you were talking about.
Um, part, I mean, one thing I would also add to is that when we made this transition, um, probably between about five and ten years ago a- and really. Kind of reworked a lot of the math department at the high school, we had teachers on special assignments specifically focused on. Implementing some of these changes.
Oh, yeah.
And that the math department's lead teacher model uh reinforces that by having one person focused on each subject area. Um, and then focused on best practices in that subject matter area. And so by having that that focus lead teacher, it helps that lead teacher then. Um, provide a lot of informal professional learning for their colleagues in for a specific subject and um. And I I think that helps and that's a model that's actually is very unique in the high school. But it allows for a lot of informal professional learning to happen within the math department.
Yeah, I'm I'm also reminded that we did do three years of uh CPM professional development. It's a very good curriculum.
And a a chunk of that CPM professional development that we did was we did in collaboration with the middle school. To kind of align the way that we're doing this discovery-based learning with the way the middle school is doing discovery-based learning. So we can make sure that when students come from eighth grade to ninth grade, they're not seeing a totally different thing. You know, we've aligned what the group roles are. Um, we the we use the same curriculum. And so, you know, I I hear you on the need for definitely more collaboration with the middle school. Um, to make sure that that jump isn't such a shock. Um, because our our last collaboration was when we adopted CPM, which was, I think, six years ago. Um, but but we did have that in mind for sure.
So I'm going to take uh the two board comments that haven't spoken yet and then go to public comment. Because I thought this was a three-hour workshop, but it's actually scheduled to end at eight, so I want to make sure the public gets to comment before. Before we get to eight o'clock, um, and then we can come back to the board. So. Hopefully, the two board comments can be quick and we will come back and let everyone have another chance. Um, but go ahead, uh, trustee Lara.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. Um, I'm going to try and make this quick, but I did like write out um a significant little chunk. So I was just going to ask about the grading system. Um, so just for a little bit of context in the class that I'm currently taking. Um, homework is worth like fifteen percent and so are quizzes and then tests are seventy percent uh that make that they they make up seventy percent of my grade. Um, I don't remember if those proportions are the same in other math classes, but I do think that like tests have historically been like. The largest contributors to the grade. Um, but other classes that I take in the school like also account for participation and classwork completion. Um, and that also ties into the conversation about like coherency across like departmental grading systems. So in math, like I also know that students are not allowed to take their tests home. Or to like to review or learn like from outside of school or retake subjects that they don't understand. That is like pretty common in other classes as well. Um, but I think in English classes, we have, we have the opportunity to review like um a test that we've taken outside of school. So I was just wondering if either of you have any like insight as to how. Grading affects students' willingness to take on more challenging courses, like with tests being such a large emphasis in the class.
Um, okay, well, so yes, they are a large port part of the uh the grade. Um, we have the team tests, which is definitely a a participation kind of grade. And homework is a smaller amount and quizzes are a smaller amount. That's still an assessment. And uh tests are a large part. It's true, we don't um. Have kids take them home, but they absolutely see their tests. And we have debrief sheets that are very, very, very specific. Especially in math one and math two and math three. Um, and I think the math one two honors for sure has debrief sheets about what. Um, what you have missed and how you can get better. It, it is different from some other departments. We don't retest, however. Um, we absolutely spiral. All of our courses are spiraled. And uh last semester, we dropped the lowest test score, so and that made a a big difference in kids' grades. And that might be a policy that we move forward. We're still discussing that, but um. It is. For math, it is not participation. It's it's so much. It's not as important as whether or not you are able to solve problems. And that has been the case, and that's maybe why a whole board meeting is devoted towards math. Um, because that is the way we have. Uh, we we show that kids are proficient because our courses, it depends. Um, we count on students being able to do things for the for the next class. In math three, we really need people to know how to factor. We need people to know how to solve equations. We need. We need people to know how to do trigonometry. And our courses build and they always have been. We can't undo that, though the way we're teaching it is way, way, way more spiraled. So, um, I don't know if that's answering your questions in to your satisfaction, but there is my response to it.
But I I think um.
I was gonna, I'm just gonna ask a quick question. What do you mean by like having a course be spiraled?
Oh, um, what we do is um, things keep coming up. Um, meaning that in their homework, in homework that we give, we have review and preview questions always. And in fact, most of our tests are not just on, you know, chapter eight test is not just going to have chapter eight questions on it. It's going to have a question from chapter five, maybe from chapter six. And of course, we warn the kids, like beware, you you're going to need to remember how to do this. But what that is, is that allows kids, I mean, it it prevents kids from for from forgetting. Um, back in the day when I taught algebra one, you know, geometry, algebra two. We did not do that. Chapter seven was chapter seven and chapter eight was chapter eight. And when they got to their final exam, which was. A review of the whole semester, the kids crashed and burned. Because they weren't used to spiraling. They weren't used to reviewing uh the old material and how it came back. So anyways, that is something that has come up with the the CPM curriculum beautifully, I think. Um, and um, when we, when it comes to giving a a final or a mid-year, kids. Hardly ever crash and burn. They really, you know, if a kid has a B in the class, they got a B on the final. I go, yay, that's a good final. So, go ahead, Annie J. Did you have another?
Yeah, I I think also I just wanted to kind of acknowledge that that that's part of where this conversation about standards-based grading kind of came up. Is that that we were really looking at. We were looking at the way the course was spiraled and we were looking at this kind of idea of test retakes. Um, and we were thinking about kind of how much um. Uh, how much work it would be logistically to create a bunch of different versions of tests for students to retake. But also in practice, um, what we find is that if you give kind of optional test retakes. It tends to really help the students who already are being quite successful. And and it doesn't help as much the students who are struggling and and a little bit less engaged. And so we wanted to look at kind of what are strategies that people use to give students multiple opportunities to demonstrate mastery of the curriculum. Over the course of the year rather than um, you know, I did poorly on test number one and now that grade is hurting my grade for the rest of the year. Um, and so, so we we are uh really optimistic that standards-based grading will give us a chance to. Um. If you, for example, take a test that is on chapter one. Um, and it doesn't go so well, when you take the next test that has chapter one and chapter two material. We could replace that, essentially replace that chapter one grade with the chapter one portion of the next test. So that if you're demonstrating mastery in the chapter one material by the end of the year. That should count for mastery of that concept. This kind of just, I don't know how. Uh, much everyone knows about standards-based grading, but that's sort of the main philosophy. Um, and so that's part of why we're piloting it uh next year in some of our classes is to look at it as an option. Uh, to help with that problem.
Thank you so much. Um, and then I had like another question and then like a comment regarding that like response that you just gave me. So. Yeah, I really appreciate you both like getting into more so like how the grading works and like why it is the way that it is. Um, but I would really love to see um a progression towards having. Students in the classroom have sort of an incentive to be more engaged, like receiving the work that they're receiving. I think like having an emphasis on um, understanding the material outside of school is something that students are. Like struggling with is sort of what I can see, like, or what I, only what I can see based off of the fact that there is no. Like grade for participation or in class um work completion. And I understand that like. Math is very much focused on getting the answer correct or like understanding the formula or um. Well, like what the answer to this like equation, how to solve this equation might be, but the same could be said about like mostly any other class, like for Spanish, you have to know the conjugation. You have to know um these different tenses. And um for English likewise, you need to know like. Like the perfect essay structure, et cetera, et cetera. Like having in-class participation and like work completion. Allows like the teacher to really like notice and understand where these students are at. It shows the student that they are being like paid attention to. And that what they do in class really matters and that this class like should be important to them. And it also gives them the opportunity to. If they are not that great at completing work outside of school for mental health reasons or extracurriculars, that they do care about the material and they are paying attention in class. Um, I had a question about um, just like a very simple question, but about in terms of like what. The conversations have been about incorporating anti-racist teachings or like what work has been done. Um, I know the use, like you mentioned that those were some like current sort of like supports or like interventions or just. Um, current happenings. And I was just curious as to what those conversations or what those actions um have looked like.
Um, I can talk maybe a little bit about that. I I think um. That in particular was on the slide of recommendations for the future because. Um, we have had a a little bit of professional development on on kind of. Those topics, but we we really haven't had much as a school. Um. I think are, we did a couple of years ago. A a good chunk on of professional development on restorative justice and. Kind of restorative circles and building class community. Um, but we haven't had a lot of school-wide professional development on anti-racist teaching specifically. And I I think that could be something that would be really helpful to explore as a school as a whole.
If I could just.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I I I understand that. And that's something that like we all can sort of definitely work towards in this district. Um, but I just recall earlier, like hearing, I think, like some like mentioning of the fact that like when you are approaching a student. That is a person of color, um specifically black or Latino, about whether or not they are like doing well in the class or. Uh, yeah, Clementina, I mean, sorry, uh, vice president Duro on like had a really insightful question about that at the very beginning. And I felt that the response was definitely indicative of like our current education system in America as well as um, just. The lack of work that we have sort of put and the tension that we have put towards um this like, yeah, anti-racist teaching and all of that. I just. Like to respond to every student equally um is not the same as responding to each of them equitably. Um, and equitably looks like considering these students' different circumstances and where they come from and. Giving them the appropriate resources so that students can be on an able, like equal playing field, not just giving every student the same attention. Um, that doesn't give students the opportunity to really feel recognized and seen in the classroom. Um, and every student can be a math student, like that is a common like misconception. Like I even have myself like, hmm, I don't know how to do math and my mom's like literally a math teacher. But something that she's taught me over the years is just that, um, yeah, every, yeah, everyone has the opportunity and and has. Like should have the opportunity to be able to see themselves um succeeding well in a class and to. However, some students have a more significant struggle in that. And yeah, somebody mentioned earlier that this is a historical. Um, struggle with certain demographics falling behind in terms of math and all of that and just in school in general. And that doesn't mean that it's okay. And yeah, sorry, that's just my thoughts on the subject.
Thank you. Um, I'm sure we will come back to that core point when we, before we wrap up. So thank you for stating it so clearly. Um, trustee Dos, go ahead and then we'll move to the public.
Uh, thank you. Um, I will kind of go through my questions here. I wrote them down. Um, I'm wondering if there's been any discussions around changing the overall stigma around um math. Um, where you kind of have, uh, I want to be on this track and I'm here and I'm doing this. And if I'm not doing this, then. Uh, I'm just not, uh. I'm not on the right track or I'm doing something wrong or it's not good enough. Uh, and kind of having that feeling where there's kind of. Two, two groups. So I I'm just wondering if there's been any discussion around kind of, you know, changing that view where. Um, instead of having one here and one here, it's just you have two classes or maybe just, you know, having one, you know, kind of. Overall math uh where everybody just participates in this math and, you know, um. So kind of discussions around that. Um, I'm just going to kind of run through all my questions um in the interest of time. And then um feel free to kind of tackle uh the ones that uh you can uh to the the best of your ability based on. Uh, what we have here. Uh, my other question is, um, can you speak about the encouragement uh that we have in place around? Students uh taking AP classes um and the diversity that we see within uh those classes. Um, and how uh we're looking to improve that. Um, I received uh multiple messages from multiple parents that. The intervention programs that we currently have in place are full, so I'm wondering if we could kind of speak to that uh and. Uh, going about no longer uh having those um full. And uh, I'm wondering if we could have a discussion around students being able to take their test home. Uh, there was a couple of mentions around preventing um, around the crash and burn. Um, but if I'm preparing for a final, being able to review all my old tests as I prepare for a final, that sounds like it's cumulative. Um, seems like it makes the most sense, especially when each of the tests have information from all of the previous chapters kind of. Um, joined in there. So if I can pull my old tests, that makes sense. Or if I have a Tugger. Uh, being able to share the old test with the Tugger so that they could help me prepare. Uh, for future tests or for the final. Seems like it makes sense to me. So if we can have a discussion around that. Um. What will it look like? Um, and I'd like to hear the opinion, opinions of the experts here. What will it look like? Um, and I'd like to hear the opinion opinions of the experts here tonight uh around just removing uh the DNF grades um and kind of having a place where uh A, B, C. And then, you know, if there's anything, you know, less than that, having, you know, some certain rails in place uh to keep, you know, students above that. And I was really excited uh when uh there uh was mentioned around the group testing um and being invited to see that. And I'd love to check that out because I've never uh experienced that before. Um, so it'd be great to 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 see that um live. So uh definitely uh welcome the invite there. Um, and then uh my last couple of questions are around um numbers. And so hoping that either staff or district office can help um the board receive these numbers, which are um, do any of the uh, do any of the math uh teachers um or administrators um have a wish list? Things that are like, hey, if if I could have anything, I'd like these things. This is a question that I ask whenever we have uh presentations like this. So I'd like to hear a wish list uh from you all. Not saying that we will be able to do it all, but yeah, it's nice to hear uh wish lists. You know, like what things that, you know, would make the program better. You know, but you know, kind of specifically focusing on uh the program curriculum uh and staff or whatever wish list might look like to you all. I hope that that was uh, you know, kind of clear there. And then uh the last, my last question is, um, if we could receive uh the demographics uh of the current math staff at the middle school and the high school level. I know that we kind of talked about the students, but um, you know, kind of the demographics of the uh staff at both levels, uh what's the percentage? And then kind of going into detail, uh male versus female, uh black, white, Asian, Latinx, et cetera. And uh those are all my questions. And I know it was a lot, but uh in the interest of time, I just wanted to kind of put them all out there.
Well, let me just start with the very first question that you said about how kids, you know, are are broken off into two, two groups, three groups, whatever. But I must say, um, there is absolutely nothing wrong or lesser than our Math One, Math Two, Math Three curriculum. It is really, really good. The kids go through um algebra, geometry, trigonometry, statistics in a very sophisticated way. When a kid does drop down from say Math One, Two to Math One, boom, they're in a class that is not too easy for them. Um, in in most cases. Our curriculum is is very strong. Our kids who go through our regular, regular track can end up in an AP course. They can take AP Stat. And there are, if you saw from the beginning, our our movements in the um in our program, kids could then go back into a plus class and take AP Calc. We have really, really tried to not close doors on kids. As as I said, um, we used to offer remedial math and there is still pressure sometimes to, you know, couldn't we please have a course for kids who can't handle Math One? But we really are trying to stay with the the grade level math and kids can, kids can do it. I have a really strong, and we have a lot of evidence that they can do it. Kids often struggle in Math One and Math Two and then come out to Math Three, which is junior level math. And they put it together and they are college eligible, even though they didn't have such a great time in Math One and Math Two. So um anyways, I just wanted to say that there is nothing lesser than our our um regular track. Um, and EJ, I saw you kind of writing. I hope you got some of those.
Do a couple more if you want, or or do you wanna?
I do have the other seven questions and um staff can follow up on those questions. Uh, most of which have um we covered tonight and recommendations and some others that we will be forward to the board. Um, so um staff can take care of those.
Oh, you know what? Actually, there is another thing. He did say, um, uh, what is the thing that we would like? You know, I heard that and um and it's often just very difficult. Um, class size uh is is difficult. Uh, when you have thirty-two kids in a class and you've got a mixture of resource kids and IEP kids and five oh four kids and kids who, you know, may not be that engaged, it is, it is hard for one person. So um thirty-two is a big number for a class. Um, as as Mr. McNally said, we try to make the um the honors classes bigger and that regular classes smaller, but that doesn't always work because the constraints of the budget. Um, so if you're going to give us FTE for, I don't know, eleven freshman classes, give us twelve. Okay, I mean, that's that's just pie in the sky. That that would help. Because uh kids are individuals and we were, we try to work with them where they're at. And um, you know, it's it's not so easy being one person with a lot of kids who need a lot of things. And as I said, after this COVID year, we counted on skills that weren't there. And um it was, it's hard to catch up. So I I guess I've answered two things out of his seven, but um.
Yep. So I also took notes and some of these are, I think, data points. I I do want to make sure that when we come back after public comment that we do talk more about that recommendation slide um and dig into that a little more deeply. But I want to move to public comment and then we will need to move to extend the meeting um so that we can finish our discussion. So if if you're out there and hoping to make a comment, please put your hand up now while I wait for our uh timer. Great, thank you. Starting with uh Shannon.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm just gonna move into a quieter space. We have piano practice going on. Um, I just wanted to say, I want to thank you for the um presentation. It was really informative. I had, I guess I have a couple of comments and then a question. And I I think it's important that you hear what um we hear as middle school parents, what we hear as our kids are preparing to go to AHS and for math. And I think it here's, here's three things you hear. First of all, we hear don't enroll your kid in Math One, Two unless you're prepared to pay for a private tutor and also that you have to keep the tutor secret. And also unless your kid has a really thick skin and is prepared to have an abusive situation in the class. So that's that's one thing that we we hear um and that there's a lot of discouragement for people to actually take that class. One other thing we hear is that group work, it sounded so great the way it was described here, but the way it gets talked about from some parents is very mixed, I would say, in that if your kid is in a really good group with a good collaborative group of kids, that they can get a lot out of it. And if they are not, that they can end up feeling like they're teaching themselves and really everything is falling through the cracks. And so again, be prepared, you may have to hire a tutor depending on if that. And then the third thing I would say is just that there seems to be a real disconnect between eighth and ninth grade um in terms of what the preparation is. And that comes whether you're coming from eight, the advanced and from eight, eight advanced or eight plus or eight, grade eight math, that either way, they don't feel ready for high school. And I think that's borne out in the grades. And I would just like to hear a little bit more concrete discussion or talk about how we can really make the bridge between the middle school and the high school more functional and really prepare the kids, whether they're going on the advanced track or the non-advanced track that they have this ability to to do well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Drew.
Hi, thanks for this meeting. Um, also speaking as a parent, the number that I'd like to focus on that you showed earlier in the presentation was the extraordinarily large number of students who have left Math One, Two. Uh, and as a parent of a student in that class, I can understand why. This is, this is a significant problem. The uh, the, as a former math educator myself, my feeling is that especially in rigorous classes, the role of the instructor is to provide a welcoming environment where students are encouraged to succeed and not feel that they are forced due to the circumstances of the classroom to have to leave. And it's a really unfortunate that we are shown those statistics as evidence that something is going on, something is prompting students to feel that this is not a class where they can succeed, whether due to the stress associated with it, the model of the education that they feel is uh either too difficult or too un-un-unachievable. There's a problem there. And there has been a lot of discussion around around this issue in this meeting today. I think that if you really speak to many of the parents who are dealing with the transition from eighth into ninth grade and then the parents of the students who are experiencing this ninth grade class, you will hear loud and clear that um that the way this class is taught and the level of support and encouragement provided to our students and instructional environment is not serving them. Um, I would really encourage you to reflect on measures that uh you can take that you all are responsible for and in a position of responsibility for, try and help our students do better at this level and then have them carry through all succeeding through the higher levels of the math curriculum. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Jesse.
Hi, I'm a father of a ninth grader who's in Math One, Two. And I didn't realize it was me echoing what the previous people said, but I am to some extent. I was kind of shocked in the in the preparation for ninth grade in the kind of messaging we were getting from the district, which was very consistently, don't take Math One, Two, it's really hard, almost nobody should be in it. If you think you're ready for it, you you aren't. And then that messaging, which is certainly going to drive away many families, was then echoed by at least from my son's reports by the messaging that he got when he was in the class, which was very much, uh, lots of you shouldn't be here. This is going to be an impossible class. You really want to not be here. I think that is an unfortunate message to send to students. I also think it probably has the effect of of widening disparities in the enrollment in that class. The sorts of parents who are going to ignore that messaging and put their kids in the in the class anyway, and the sorts of kids who are going to stick it out are likely to be from more advantaged families who are more comfortable with the system. And I think if you're, if you're looking for for reasons why there are disparities in enrollments, that would be an important one in my mind to look at. Um, I think that many more kids can and should be ready for Math One, Two. And I think to the extent that the students aren't ready for it, that says something about how about what we're doing in eighth grade and earlier. But uh, we shouldn't be, i-if if the only way to solve that problem is to have that kind of messaging going into the class, it suggests something else is wrong. Thanks.
Thank you. Fusaka.
Hi, uh, first of all, thank you so much for the um, for this workshop. It has been very insightful. Um, I just wanted to comment, um, I'm a former math teacher in high school, so I really appreciate all the work that teachers do. They're very dedicated and uh we appreciate that. But I just wanted to mention that I've been working with a lot of um as a tutor, working with a lot of accelerated um Math One, Two and Two, Three students. And I just want to comment like three things that I've observed. First of all, it I, it's a lot of things that um the other parents have already mentioned that um the kids have been very discouraged. And um it's very heartbreaking as a math tutor who wants to um, who just wants us to um to have more confidence in math. And um they say about the group work, first of all, um, and I totally value group work and I see the importance of group work. But um, so what the reality is that the students say that if you have a tutor, you know what's going on. But if you don't, you could be in a group and you could, four students could be lost for the ninety percent of the time in class. And also I've heard a lot of people um have to rely on YouTube for instruction or pay tutors. And so we talk about um disparities, um, you know, um, it just seems like uh something needs to be done. Otherwise, people have to rely on tutors and people who can afford tutors or other um resources outside of school are getting higher scores. And um that's um, that that's has been my um observation. And also the fact that some students have told me that they are scared of missing school because the the textbook, it doesn't have much instructions. And so if they miss class, it is really difficult to um, to to teach yourself um if you miss a class. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen.
Um, I've been a little bit confused and a bit disengaged in hearing some of the presentations because it doesn't at all work with our experience um with our ninth grader in in Math One, Two. Our child was one of the twenty-four kids who dropped Math One, Two. Say that what some of the parents have said and what Fusaka just said in this last um two minutes um is absolutely our experience, that it has been a, is has been a cause of distress for our student and also for our family and that we have absolutely not experienced any of this growth mindset that we've been hearing about tonight, that in fact, we have been told exactly what Jesse Rothstein said earlier that, you know, most of you in this Math One, Two class are going to drop this class. They absolutely are not allowed to take tests home, meaning that they can, these kids cannot learn from their mistakes. There's no opportunity to take those tests home and really study them. Um, and that the teachers are are grading not even every question on every test, that it's random which questions are graded. And so um, you know, we we have found a that it has not, this Math One, Two class in particular has really not been about promoting a growth mindset and promoting us uh encouraging the students to really think of themselves as math learners. In fact, it has really caused a lot of distress and caused my own child to feel that he is not confident in math. And it's been a very um devastating experience for our family.
Thank you. Jenny.
Hi, um, it's wonderful to hear that you guys did this workshop. I think it was so needed um many, many years ago. So I'm glad that you have it. Um, in addition, it's sad for me to hear other parents that are kind of in the same situation that we were many years ago. My son dropped out of math and we did go to Tilden because there he got the support that he needed. But I do have questions for the math department co-chairs because my understanding from your workshop, it seems that everything is running great. Um, and the feedback that you seem to get seems to be tremendous. But I do have a few questions for you and hoping that you don't necessarily need to answer now, but I would love it if somebody can answer it eventually down the line. One of them is what steps is the math department really taking to close the gaps? And how impactful is it the, is the fact that our students of color are not visible in the more rigorous courses? The other thing is what feedback have you received from students regarding your math courses? And have you pivoted your direction based on this information? And lastly, um, how adaptable are the math courses? We spoke or you spoke about successes, but how can we talk about successes when such gaps or lack of diversity still consists in math courses? Thank you.
Thank you. Philip.
Hi, thanks for taking my thoughts. Uh, I am a parent here in the Albany School District, but also a teacher here at Albany High School. Uh, as someone who is seeing both sides of this and and hearing the comments and hearing some of the comments before from the community, I wanted to take a minute, one, to note with appreciation the staff that we have. I think the balance that's asked for and required in this community is a challenging one. I think you're hearing a lot of comments from parents and families who are rightfully concerned about their students and feeling like their students are able to find success in math. Uh, there is an expectation in this community that many students will find success in math at the highest level. And that can be challenging when you have such a rigorous cour- coursework, coursework. Uh, the rigor that we have in our courses, not just at the Math One, Two and Two, Three level, but also in the plus courses is exceptional and certainly better than anything I saw. is exceptional and certainly better than anything I saw growing up, even in a successful math program. So I I do want to just note all of the balances that have to be taken when we talk about trying to address diversity. Particularly when we're trying to address both DNF students, but also diversity in our most accelerated classes. When we're trying to give students opportunities to receive feedback and work together, but also want some direct instruction because certain groups are feeling lost. And so I I would guess my overall message is, I think this is a fantastic idea. We should be continuing to look for ways that we can improve. But I also think if you look at the results that we have in our district so far, we have been doing an excellent job and I would just encourage everyone to keep in mind the level of balance that is required of teachers to handle all the different aspects of what we have talked about tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea.
Hi, everyone. So I I I really, listening to the tenor of this conversation, it's just, there's a lot here. I I'd like to ask that you take action and that you listen to our students and I am so grateful that you're putting this all out in a public space so that we can discuss this. And I think the student perceptions and what I've heard from parents tonight, it just resonates so much and I think we really need to interrogate our grading or sorting, how we push students it in and out of different classes, how we test, how we alienate students from math. And I think that this is also a lesson that intent isn't enough, that we really need to have anti-racist teaching. And we really need to make sure that we're anchoring our work in culturally appropriate practices. Tutor we have for our child is stunned by what he sees and what's coming home. And I think there's a sense of urgency in that, like other parents, we were warned about what our children would experience at AHS and math. We've heard this for twenty years now and this is a very urgent situation. And I think we have outdated conceptions of rigor. We're not here for rigor for our children. We're here for them to love learning. We're here for them to engage, feel a sense of belonging and go on with passion in their lives around what they learn. And that is not what's happening right now in math and it's very distressing. They'd really love to love math. I think the equity data are not surprising, given the state of this country. They are unacceptable. And we really need to be understanding what's going on there and how our students feel in our classrooms. So I thank you and please investigate also the connection with mental health and what's going on. So I thank you very much for this forum and for being open to change practice and to learning from everyone. I'm sure this is a hard experience for everyone involved, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Deborah.
Hi, thank you so much for that presentation. It was very informative. I really am I'm glad to be able to, you know, look at that data when making my comments. But also I want to echo a lot of what, you know, others are saying around the messaging that the students are receiving. I think at this point, it's pretty undeniable that they are receiving this messaging and especially in the math one and two. And I really want to urge the board to implement some surveying from the students. We can hear what they have to say about their experience in the math class. In the math classes, whether they feel seen, whether they feel like their needs are being met and what are some of the ideas and some ways that they believe that the classes can be improved. And that might also give us some insight into our black and brown students and why they are not in those classes. Yeah, so definitely, I'm also concerned about the ability. Well, one of the things that I heard a lot was growth mindset. And yes, that is a very nice word, very catchy, but in what ways, what are some practices that are actually contributing to a growth mindset? Because I know from the middle school that they have ways of motivating students, the retakes are a big part of that growth mindset, allowing students to redeem themselves and not have a grade feel punitive punitive. So again, if we could see that in the high school, it would really contribute to a positive learning environment where students feel seen and they can, you know, learn from their mistakes. Again, being able to take those tests home can address why they are having difficulty with test taking. It'll give parents insight, it would give any additional support that they have at home or from tutors, a little bit more insight as to why it is that they're receiving those grades. So once again, thank you.
Thank you. And that is our last public comment. I think, sorry, Zoom. Navigation. So I want to try to, I really appreciate the comments that we've gotten. A lot of those comments reflect information that the board has been sent by parents over email as well, so I I want to try to maybe frame this discussion and see if the superintendent can help us navigate this some because I think we're sort of approaching a little bit of a multifaceted problem here and it it's, I think we're still trying to figure out to what extent these different aspects of the problem are related to one another. So we see obviously the inequities in who is enrolling in different classes and how students are performing. We've seen in past presentations that we have inequities in performance and who's making Ds and Fs and test scores and so forth. Math is is a bit different from our other departments because we also have these tracking systems. So we also have this data on who's taking these different levels of math, which is not something we really have in in other departments. So so it's an added dimension of equity or inequity in this case that we're able to see. We also, there's clearly a situation in which the values that we've heard tonight being articulated about the math program are not being operationalized in at least one of of our classes. Now, the board doesn't normally get involved in situations or conversations about how one particular class is actually implementing the values that the board has directed or or is happy to see in a department, but what do we do when that isn't being reflected in actual classroom practice? And that's the piece of the conversation that I think we need some help from the superintendent to figure out how to navigate. But, you know, and I'm also, my own perspective is I have a student who's now been through two of those classes, so I have my own thoughts on this as well that I'm trying to separate from, but I I do think as this one of the commentators said, if we have a class that is discouraging students or making it seem like math is very, very difficult for this particular class, that that itself creates following inequities. If students feel like they need tutors to succeed in some of our math classes, that's going to create inequities in who signs up for the classes and how they perform. So I'd also try appreciate getting some feedback from any of you really about how do we get at this question about how students are actually experiencing math? How they're getting discouraged and be honest about about what we can try to do to intervene there because I think it's likely that this path, you know, that these patterns that we're observing and who takes what classes and how they're performing and how they're replicating these racial and ethnic and to some degree gender differences. You know, is being absorbed partly by what we heard these parents describe. And just one last comment before I, before I ask you to respond, I think, you know, it's always hard as a board, we often hear from the families whose children are most successful in school, right? We hear about the, we hear from people who tend to have more resources. We have heard almost entirely in math from students who are in these advanced classes. So it's a little hard to balance because we're not hearing as much from students who are in math one, math two, math three, right? So I think that always makes us want to make sure we're really focusing on all of our kids and not just those that that we're hearing about, but I think this is clearly, as somebody said, you know, a big issue and one consequence is we now have twenty-four kids who have to be moved into a different class mid-year. That impacts all the other students in that class, that the reverberations I think are significant. You know, in addition to caring about these students, it also impacts the whole program. So first, I'd like to have the superintendent help us figure out, how do we have a conversation about this situation in which one of our classes doesn't seem to be reflecting the values that we've heard tonight? And then how do we get some of get more at this student experience question, how students are feeling discouraged, how we're actually supporting them to see themselves as math students?
Madam Chair, President Hinckley, first, thank you for the question. I'm going to go in order and talk about the equity piece. And in Albany, we are quick, fast and in a hurry to throw out the word equity. And equity starts with data and that's why we are getting this year and last year an equitable amount of data. So that data can dictate and help guide our footsteps in terms of how do we respond to these kinds of issues? What you saw tonight and with the data was that there's a disproportionate level of equity in our district. When you talk about kids who are historically disenfranchised, they don't have, based on the data, the same opportunities as others. And it was illuminated tonight. And so if we really want to get into data and we will, it is going to start having discussions and and operationalizing issues about how we reallocate our resources based on kids' needs. That's really what equity is about. And that's important to note. And so we're starting to engage in a practice of how do we respond to this data? So we have more equitable outcomes. That's first and foremost. Secondly, that mean, as I've just noted, rearranging and adjusting our resources based on our kids' needs. And third, when we talk about the large number of students exiting any class, one of the things we want to do is inquire a bit deeper, look at a deep data dash about what kind of supports are we providing for these classes? And the kids who are leaving the classes for a number of reasons. It could be because they're not meeting the certain standard. But what kind of standard of support are we providing for the kids? And so we have to take ownership in that and provide the adequate support so that kids are are not dropping these kinds of classes. When it comes to unethical behaviors and things that are not aligned with our principles and ethics in our district, it's not a conversation I would have in public. That's a conversation I would have because that's a personnel matter and I won't have it in this forum, but it is something that needs to be addressed because that's deeply concerning, because we should be encouraging and not discouraging. And if we're discouraging, where is our equitable practices? Where are the champions for the kids who need a champion? And so those are kind of issues that, things that are not personnel items, I'll address them full disclosure and transparency and and a public forum. But things that may be associated or closely related to our practice as staff members, that's not, that's not ethically sound, is something I won't do in in this kind of form. But I did hear my parents, I heard our kids and I heard our wonderful teachers and the unwavering commitment they have for wanting to address these issues. I I I do appreciate the recommendations because it is about solutions, it is about support and it is about having standards, not just for our kids, but for studying with myself, the board and our staff throughout our district. And if we're falling short, where we are doing harm, anything remotely close to what may be harm and discouraging to young folks who are very vulnerable, that is a priority in terms of our response. And I want to say that because I wanted to be clear that I heard what folk says, I I I felt the pain of some of the the narratives. But I also think we owe all of our departments, tonight we talk about our math department, adequate support. It makes no sense to me for teachers to get up here and demonstrate the kind of professionalism that they did and the kind of commitment that they do. And then we ask them what they need for support and we don't respond adequately. So I'm hoping that we can take the latter part about responding and providing the kind of support that our teachers need so that they have the tools and the resources to do their jobs at the ideal level. And so we don't want to have a one and done. We want to have a system approach of looking at data, responding to data and providing the board and the community an update on how we are addressing these issues through a systemic need means resources, but also have teachers have the kind of confidence they ought to have in us when they cry out for help and saying, hey, we need smaller class sizes, hey, we need this, hey, we need that. That has to become a priority of response. And so as you look at all levels, be it student, teachers and district office, because district offices exist exclusively to support schools who house and educate our most precious commodity and that's our children. And so I I wanted to say again, this is not a one and done, this is a continuum. That's something that we'll be looking at throughout the years and circling back, reporting to both our community, our teachers and the school board about how we are supporting our kids and our teachers and making sure we all adhere to the highest of standards. As expected by me as a superintendent and spelled out in the board goals and board policies.
All right, I I do promise we'll come back to the recommendations as well at the end, but moving ahead, Vice President Duran.
I think Ms. Dana, trustee Dana was before me and also Brian had his hand up earlier.
Yeah, I I was, I I just, I wanted to say really quickly in response to some of the parents. I appreciate your your stories and I have similar stories from friends of mine. I personally didn't have to rely on a tutor or get a tutor, but there was quite a bit of clarification and communication to us as students that there would be a high expectation of self-study and that can be really, really time consuming. And so that is a portion that I find to be also like, if not equally inequitable to the fact that some students have to depend on a tutor. And so I I just wanted to add that in there, but it wasn't necessarily about the recommendations or anything. And so I'll I'll leave that to hang in the air and we can continue on with whatever you have to say, Vice President Duran.
Mine is a recommendation, so I'll wait till it's appropriate time.
All right, can't can't get anyone to admit they're ready to talk. All right, trustee Davidson.
Oh, I'll I'll be ready. So I just, I I've been hearing this, I used to tutor students in our district years ago in math and heard these same situations and struggled myself trying to figure out sort of, and I I had CPM math when I was in middle school. So, you know, familiarity with it, but I totally see how this can be something that our students feel they're struggling with. This is why I asked, how are we preparing them for this understanding of collaborative work and the expectations of those students? I also want to zero in if we're talking about data. We're we're talking about the numbers of these students. I think I did it right, is about twenty-one like percent who would have been totally enrolled from the start of the year of our freshman class, if I'm getting that right, there's it says there's two hundred and fifty-five. There's different numbers in two different places, a little hard from the presentation. Plus the sixty-three, which was the thirty-nine plus the twenty-four that I added together. And then I did the quick percentage math, so I'm thinking this is twenty, about twenty percent of our freshman class who are taking the math one, two course and are impacted by this. So we're talking about data, I just want to make sure we understand that that's not nothing. It's it's not huge, but it's not nothing. And and there's been an issue that's been raised, so I think that it is something that we should address and it's not the first time it's been raised, it's been raised many times over the years. So I think it's really something we should look at collectively and as a board, I think is a I was just reminded that a board meeting is for the board members to discuss, this is a workshop, so maybe we need a different time to have a follow-up discussion as board members on what we kind of think about this. So I just really want us to to make sure that we're getting into the issue of is this really the core of what's going on in the math department that is concerning to people? Is there something bigger? Because what I heard tonight again, sounds like, okay, we're we're doing a pretty good job, this really works for students, we've made some good changes. But yet we're hearing this other story and we're seeing some other data that we're still missing kids. Even though we're performing really well in terms of state standards, you know, are we really? You know, are we really, are we really addressing what the needs are? And every district and every year is going to have different needs that we have to address. And I'm not saying this has to be a personnel conversation. What I'm saying is, this has to be an approach conversation and expectations conversation. What are the expectations of what our students experience when they enter math in high school in our district? What are those expectations? What do parents expect? And if they expect a negative experience because their children want to challenge themselves, and they expect that they're going to have to figure out how to pay, and they expect that it's, it's not going to promote their children being math enthusiasts or just math confident. That's the expectation that we are setting as a district as we're entering. I think that's where we can have the conversation. We don't have to have conversations about personnel. But I do also think that this is maybe something that we should kind of let the workshop be the workshop part of it and here, go to the recommendations, and then we should maybe take that little nugget of conversation into a board discussion in another meeting, really understanding that the board members and the superintendent as the leadership team here or that branch of it kind of need to think about this. And I would hope that, you know, we could hear a little bit more from these members here who've presented so cohesively. Thank you.
Thank you. There wasn't really a question in there, but I know we also haven't given this, the staff a chance to report, to respond to some of this. I think I would echo just that I really appreciated a lot of the way that you both, Ms. Buckbauer and Ms. Bisberg talked about, talked about math and talked about welcoming students, talked about different strategies, being creative, thinking about, and now maybe we're moving to some of your, your recommendations. Thinking about standards-based grading, being creative with, with how we teach students to work together and try to solve problems. So I think Trustee Davidson may be right that perhaps having another conversation where we figure out how to use that as a district approach too, because we've had other conversations about movements towards standards-based grading, project-based learning, and other, other ways to, to support students and promote a love of learning for all our subjects, not just math. So obviously, math has sort of been put in the spotlight tonight, but that's not, that's an artifact of many different things, not because, not because you're, you know, there's something different about math that we aren't concerned about in other departments. So maybe we can, I think, I think Julie's back. Maybe we can put the recommendations slide up, and then I know Vice President Duran wanted to make a recommendation, but maybe we can have a bit of a focused conversation on some of these, see if there's some response from the district about which, which of these are things that are already in the works or things that, that may be being planned for next year or that we have support for? And then which ones would be sort of core priorities for you? I'm going to start with, I don't know, Vice President Duran, if you want to just speak now or wait till we?
I'll wait till I hear, we hear from the staff.
Okay. So why don't you, the staff, just give us a sense of sort of your core priorities here? Or if you feel that any of these are particularly important for addressing some of what we've talked about tonight? And then we'll move back to the board.
A little hard to say. I'd say all it.
Yeah, can we get the, can you full, sorry, can you full screen it? I'm on my laptop and the font's real small. I mean, I, I think like, what, there's, there's a couple of big through lines that I heard and, and thinking about kind of these recommendations in light of the, the comments. I know it can be incredibly stressful as a parent trying to support your, your student through their high school education. And I, I hear that stress, and I, you know, we are here as math teachers to help support your students and, and to make sure that they, they are getting the things that they need to be successful. And I, I think one of the big through lines that I heard was, was just kind of that transition from eighth grade to ninth grade can be a really difficult one. And, and that, that we've known as a math department and, and the middle school has known that, that our communication around this Math 1-2 class and kind of around our expectations for, for our students, that the communication and the collaboration could definitely be improved. And I'm trying to remember if it's on this slide or if it's on the slide before. But that is definitely one of our planned next steps is to really, to really carve out some time to collaborate with the middle school and, and sort of talk about that transition and how we make sure that that goes smoothly and how we make sure that, that our course recommendations align and make sense and, and all of that. So I think that, that's definitely a big takeaway next step that I'm seeing. I think another big piece is, is this kind of like creating community and some levels of, of support within your class where the, the students feel that the teacher cares about them, and the students feel that the teacher sees them as individuals. I think this is incredibly important for supporting students. And I think there's a couple of ways that, that we get at that. I really do think smaller class sizes is a huge piece of that. I said it at our last board meeting, that if you have 32 students and you have 95 minutes, and all you do is individually check in with the students, I didn't do the math tonight, but it's only a couple of minutes per student. So it really, you know, I think it really is important to me that my students know that I see them as individuals, and the smaller the class size is, the more effectively I can do that. But I do also think, you know, some more professional development around anti-racist teaching practices and culturally responsive pedagogy to really look at kind of how you create a class community that feels more supportive. I think that is a, is a big area. And, and to do, you know, I think we, we kind of fall into this in the high school a little bit where we, we have a, the new thing comes, and we spend a professional development day or two on the new thing, and then the next new thing comes. And, and I think that, that this idea of creating a supportive classroom environment for every student, seeing your students as individuals and, and understanding how to use that knowledge of students to inform lesson planning is such a huge piece of teaching that, that a real ongoing professional development focus on that would be really helpful. And I'm looking to see, I have a lot of scribbled notes here.
Well, could I ask you to just expand on one of the bullets here? The, the staff to help track and support targeted interventions. I know Trustee Dos had asked earlier, you know, are, you know, parents say the interventions are full. You mentioned that the math hour is very busy, but, but I know that we've also heard, you know, it's not clear who's showing up to that, if it's, you know, more advanced students who are, don't want to get a B, or if it's students in Math 1 who are in danger of, of failing. So could you maybe describe what would, what would it look like to have better staff to help coordinate and support that?
Go ahead, Annie J.
So, so I, I, so there's a, there's a, something called a tiered system of intervention where essentially you, you can think of kind of the intervention services that a school provides as looking sort of like a pyramid. And there's sort of like the, the base interventions that the teachers are providing to all of the students as much as possible, and they're available to any student who wants them. And so you can think of, you know, some examples of that as being like, come in for help during lunch or come in during advisory, or I'm going to check in with you one-on-one during class. Or, you know, I'm going to have time in the, in my lesson plan to make sure that I'm going around and doing formative assessments and reteaching things that my students don't understand. And there's a piece of reaching out to parents if a student is struggling in your class. That's kind of like all students have that available to them. And then as you move up the pyramid, you identify students who have higher levels of need in, in different areas, and you provide them with kind of targeted interventions that will help them with whatever specific thing they might need more support in. And so some examples of targeted intervention are that math support class where we identify students who really need more academic support with math in particular. And we recommend students to that class. And a lot of schools that have implemented this kind of tiered intervention system, they have staff who, part of their job is helping to identify students who might need different kinds of interventions, and then making sure that those students end up getting those interventions, checking to see if those interventions are working, if they're not working, recommending different interventions or more intervention. And one, I, we, we have a good chunk of interventions. My understanding is we have a good number of interventions. But my sense is that we don't have a, a, a real tiered structure for tracking students through these different types of interventions, identifying whether or not they're being successful, they're meeting the needs of the students, and recommending new interventions if they aren't working. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McNally, or, or jump in with your understanding if you want.
Yeah, I mean, I think I covered actually a lot of this two weeks ago when we talked about Ds and Fs. And, and back to the topic of recommendations, I would actually come back to everything I recommended two weeks ago. I don't really see a lot of these challenges as existing in a bubble. And again, I think, you know, as I've mentioned, kind of school-wide systematic efforts around a lot of these things is important. And, you know, we've had a lot of disruption over the past two years, which has made a lot of change efforts difficult.
Great, thank you. Yeah, it did remind me of that staffing idea you mentioned. Always nice when some of these recommendations can be met with one solution. All right, Trustee Dos, go ahead.
Thank you. So I've been trying to figure out like kind of the best way to formulate the way I feel like this meeting is going. And so I apologize in advance, but I'm going to try and use a sports analogy because I feel like it's the best way to kind of bring it all together for me. And I feel as if our math co-chairs and principal are goalies. And that's a soccer reference. And I feel like they're goalies, and we're all kicking these balls their direction. And they are just trying to block all of the things that are coming that way, like we're saying, well, what about this? And they're like, well, this, 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 and what about this? Well, this, this, this. And so I think that it's making it really difficult to feel as if we are kind of getting to the core of what's happening and really kind of diving into solutions that are going to help the students. I feel as if it's a lot of, well, I heard that this is happening. Well, but actually, it's not, this is happening, kind of like, you know, defending, which makes sense, right? Like, that's human nature, you know, like, I'm the expert in this, and I'm kind of, I've been doing this for a long time, I have a better understanding of what's happening, I'm on the ground level, I'm in the classroom, and so I have a better understanding of, of kind of what's happening, which makes total sense. But I think it's really tough to figure out how we fix the issues that are in place. But there's one kind of consistent thing that's been happening for many years, even before our time as educators, which is this issue with our specific learners and this subject matter. And it's been a really long time with interventions and trying to put things in place to, for lack of better words, help these students catch up. And I said this at the last meeting, and I'll say it again. I don't know if continuing down that road is the best way to help these students on a large scale in the short, the amount of time that we're looking for. I don't know if consistent intervention is the way to go, because we've consistently had intervention for a long time, and the numbers are the same, not specifically, not just Albany, but statewide and nationwide. The numbers have been the same, the interventions have been in place for years and years and years. And it's been really consistent with, okay, well, let's do more, you know, Tugeren. Let's do additional here. Well, what about the family life? Maybe let's talk about absences and Targis. And then we've also talked about class size. And so I guess my thing is if, if we have 32 students in a class, that's like a lot of students in a class. But let's say we had six students in a class. And five of those students don't speak English, but the class is being taught in English only. Well, those five students, even though it's a really small number, still aren't going to grasp what is being taught because it's being taught in a different language. So I guess the point that I'm trying to make is there's a disconnect between the, the subject matter and our students. And how do we fix that? I don't know if we fix that with intervention, because even if we have the intervention, even if you have an amazing Tugger, if they have the intervention or have the Tugeren, and then they get them caught all the way back up, and then they go back into the class where there's a disconnect, then they get right back behind again. But if there is a revamp or a change in how the material is being taught, right? If there is, the cultural barrier is broken, or whatever it is that's preventing students from performing at the high level as other students, then once the intervention is in place, there's no longer a need for it to be, because it, it won't just keep getting behind again. It's, if you have a flat tire and you patch it, then it runs for a little while, then the tire starts to get low again. But then if you fix the tire and you put air in it, then you, then you roll it. But it might require for you to change the entire tire and not just keep patching the one that is broken. So I guess I'm, I'm hoping that we can approach this in a different way so that we can kind of really kind of get down to solutions. And I haven't felt like we've gotten there yet. And it feels kind of like a lot of balls going into the goal and, and our, our, our math team just kind of trying to swat them away, like, no, no, wait, no, no, wait, no, no. And, and I don't want, I don't want anybody to feel that way. I don't want anybody to feel like we're attacking the program or like they have to defend it. I, I want us to all collaborate and figure out the core problem and how we can all work together to fix it, which is why I asked for the wishlist, right? Because it's like, okay, well, what's missing? What can we do to fix that part? And then how can we, you know, so, so I'm hoping we can approach it a little differently, which is going to be tough, and it's going to require some, some, some really hard conversations. And, and, but we all got to be ready to have those. But we're going to have to approach it a little different, because the way that we've been approaching this for years is not working.
All right, thank you for, for that. I don't know if you wanted to respond specifically to any of these or offer some additional recommendations. I, I think what I'm hearing from the, from the math department or from this conversation is that there are several things that you're thinking about and have been doing recently or have planned that are about shifting what happens in the classroom for everybody, including professional development, including rethinking some of the way that the, that grading is done or that, that performance is analyzed. So I think it's going to be important for us to continue to hear updates on that. Um, so I think it's gonna be important for us to continue to hear updates on that. I think we had did have some of those same conversations around the Ds and Fs a couple of, whenever that was, a couple of weeks ago. Um, but I think I'm hearing that, you know, intervention is one part of a strategy. Um, including all of the other things that you've described um that would have implications throughout the program, not just for students um that we identify for interventions. Um, and I I understand your, you know, comments and the future plans and recommendations to be effectively your wishlist. Um, I think that one one thing that would be helpful is follow-up. So maybe, I think we've heard the recommendations, maybe we can wrap up um just by making sure we have a sense of the the sort of follow-up from this conversation. Um, maybe bundled with some of the conversations we had a couple of weeks ago. I do think, you know, trustee Dos and others identified some other data that would be helpful. I do think it would be helpful for the board to see some of this data historically, so back maybe a few years, because we also have this weird sort of pandemic cup, you know, year and a half. But I think seeing some of these trends over time might help us to understand, you know, if there has been movement in some of these. You know, we've had this current configuration of classes for several years now. So I think seeing some of those demographic trends so that we can see a little bit better whether what we're seeing, when what we're looking at is a one-year anomaly, particularly given some of our small members. Um, and I think especially to get at some of this question of movement of students between levels, um, you know, to get a sense of are students able to move up? How many students are moving back down? Um, so I have a a list of some of that data. I think that's one follow-up step is to just keep doing that data analysis. And then I think hearing some more about having some follow-up about how these broader changes um take place as you begin to implement them next year. Um, so I think as somebody in this meeting said, this is not just a one-off conversation. Um, but for us to be again to hear about how some of those interventions um are working. And then obviously, when we get to our budget process in June, we will have to figure out how to set some of these priorities, right, in terms of things that cost money. Um, and so I wanna I want to make sure that we are sort of pulling in all these different threads of wish lists and recommendations into that conversation. So we may call on you at that time as well to um or staff may reach out to better understand some of these recommendations. Um, so with that, I wanna make sure we that board members, you have a chance to identify other next steps that you would like to um have following this conversation and then we'll wrap up. Trustee, uh Vice President Duran, go ahead, because I think you wanted to speak about the recommendations.
Yes, I I just wanted to be sure that um Albany High and the math teachers feel that uh from my perspective, your math program is all about rigor and high expectations. And I'm totally in agreement with that. And also, uh Mr. McNally tonight mentioned the whole child. And that's really key as well. Um, I think math, I I believe it's now considered a gateway for students. And so that's why this is so, so key that all our students are engaged and um doing well, being successful in in any of the math courses. So I would like to recommend in addition to to these really, I like the recommendations you have. And a couple of our parents uh of color spoke to it tonight, which is to uh have a survey um that students could uh actually give the the math program and the math teachers feedback as to what their real perceptions are. And I'm not just talking about the the math one-two students, but but all the students that are engaged in the math and all the math courses. So that um you can really hear some help helpful feedback, because I think you really are willing and open to to engaging and listening to what students have to say as well. And and I would encourage that a follow-up survey be done by the math teachers as well. So that they can see what the what the students have to say and then and then they can respond and and the board can get that. And and the whole community can have the information so that this dialogue uh continues. And I think it's it's very positive and and, you know, it's it's not easy. It's a challenge to do all this. But I think I think we're all uh really moving in the right direction together. Um, and so I would I would like to add that to to the recommendations of of things that that we do in the district.
Trustee Dos.
Uh, hi, yeah. Um, I think that um I think it would be, I guess, more clear um to kind of make uh more specific suggestions. I tried to be more general just because um, you know, I'm I'm not the expert. So I kind of, my my point was to kind of share uh my thought process, kind of where I was, and then um to kind of, you know, uh wait to hear, you know, feedback and suggestions from from, you know, the individuals that are that are doing it. But I think that that can sometimes be misconstrued. Um, so so I'll make more specific suggestions of things that I think will help um as we move forward on this journey. Um, I think that it should just be, I think we should just change the 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 test back process. I just think students should get their tests back. Um, I've heard different um kind of explanations as to why students don't get their tests back and I just don't agree with them. So I just think we should give students their tests back after they take them, so that they can use them to get better. Um, I think we just need to take a look at that. I'm not sure how we make that change, but I just think we should make that, students should get their tests back after they take it. So uh that would be a suggestion there. The anti-racist training, uh kind of a timeline on that. When it specifically is gonna happen? Is it gonna happen before next year? That's when I'd like to see it. And then uh ongoing training and then uh is it going to be mandatory? Are we allowed to make it mandatory? If so, how do we go about doing that? Does the board need to play a part in that? And then no longer having a waitlist for the interventions if we're gonna have them in place and if we're gonna offer them and if we're gonna advertise them um to not have any students that can't participate in them. And if we have, if it gets to a point where we have so many students that need math intervention, that it's full, that we take a deeper look as to why that's happening. Because then maybe there's something else that we need to take a look at. Um, and then uh I'm not sure what the current process is for retaking tests uh or being able to ma- you know, make tests up, things like that, but um, you know, taking a look at that and uh putting that in place. Uh, so I hope that that was a little more specific. Um, and makes it a little kind of easier to understand uh kind of my thought process and 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 where where I think we can go. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Trustee Davidson.
Um, I would love to add to this list, just because I don't, I think we've talked about it a lot, but I'm not, I don't see it in writing, is the the bridging from the middle school to the high school. Um, and I think you, I think you two are intending and the department is intending for that to happen. But I would love to just make sure that we really support that and and um provide time for you all to do that. And, you know, if we need to give you, if we need to approve extra days or something, so that you have time to go and observe and they have time to observe you and and really put your heads together around that transition. I think that would be really important. Um, and then the other part that I would love to see us just continue a conversation about, um, and I know the grading is is subjective so that we give teachers autonomy, but we had talked, it it sounded to me like there was sort of a department-wide um understanding of the grading. And I would love to see us, if we're going for the collaborative teamwork, I would love to see some of the grading reflect that that's happening and not just from a group test, but from how students are actively engaging. You know, trustee Lira said this really well. Um, and I wanted to really support that. I think that we can get our, some of our kids to feel like, some of our students to feel like they are more excited about it, more enthusiastic and more confident if they're seeing that grade raise from the efforts they're putting into the classroom. So I would just love us to continue that conversation.
Thank, thank you. Um, I am writing this stuff down, by the way. All right, trustee Boyd.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to encourage um a a look at at the different teachers in the program and different per- perhaps differences in teaching style or in the communication that is actually happening in individual classes. Because it just seems like there is, as people have pointed out, some somewhat of a disconnect between what um a number of families are saying their experiences have been as far as the the direct messaging that their students have received. And and then the the discussion that we've had here tonight and the importance of, you know, making students feel as if they can all be, you know, math students and and sort of softening those edges. It just feels like there's a disconnect there. And so I just wanna make sure that that isn't lost, that it, you know, that should be looked into um so that we can just make sure that there, that this philosophy of of really nurturing students and making them feel um that they can thrive in in a in a rigorous math environment, that that's something that's coming from from all places and and isn't getting lost along the way anywhere. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you. Um, so we are well past our adjourning time. I apologize. I did think originally this was a three-hour workshop, so I guess I was right. Um, I just wanna really, really, really thank the two department chairs for being here. Um, it is not, you know, easy to sit here and field questions from the board. And it's, I think, been a great exercise for us to be able to take some of the conversations that we've had about equity and student achievement and student performance assessment and how the values that we're articulating actually get operationalized in different classrooms. And it's just been great to really have that conversation. Um, and, you know, I really appreciate that you, your department was up for that and really participated so fully. It's been, I think, really, really educational for all of us and I think gives us ways to move forward with thinking about the whole district, um and thinking about these same issues in every department. Um, and every and all of our kids, not just not just high school. So I really, you know, just a ton of gratitude for you both. And I really apologize for keeping you up until, um, well, you probably don't go to bed yet, but you have other things to be doing. Um, so really wanna appreciate that. And also, I I don't actually know who put all the data together, but whoever assembled all that and responded to our questions and comments at the last minute to fix some of those things. Um, also very much appreciated. And Principal McNally, as always, for just being such a a great um messenger and communicator and educator for us about about how the high school works. Um, so thank you all. A lot of gratitude, a lot of next steps. And and thank you to all the parents, to families who called in. Um, it's really helpful um to hear from both students and families. So we look forward to more of that. Um, so after after uh I'll turn it over to Superintendent Wells and then uh when you're ready, we will adjourn.
Yeah, um, I I just wanna be um clear that um there's some appreciations um I have as a professional for the math department. And that is one and foremost that they have high standards that they're not willing to compromise a wave. Um, the challenge, um, the way I see it, um, in part is that um we as a district need to um high, those high levels of support that's needed in that department, so that more kids are being successful and that we're having equitable outcomes. And that um everybody has an opinion about what um we should do in the math department. Um, and what I wanna avoid is a knee-jerk reaction in that we have a more systemic approach to this kind of work where we engage in a cycle of continuous improvement. And as we begin to roll out our NTS as multi- multi-tier systems to support our UDL and our ongoing um assessments and setting time aside for um teachers to grapple with how to respond to the data, um, we expect to see um um more equitable outcomes and more equitable participation and AP and um advanced courses that um represent the school and student body, where every kid from every walk of life have an opportunity to experience and engage in um the um high academic rigor um opportunities that Albany uh provides. And we take great pride in that. And so um one of the things we're gonna do is have um on the calendar um periodically throughout the year um a revisit uh around how we have increased the quality of support that teachers need. And um what kind of um outcomes we're having to determine the efficacy of um our adjustments to the work. We also precluded from some of the suggestions, and I'm not gonna get into the specifics, because the laws preclude us of doing that in terms of um um grading and and what we can and can't do. Um, hence the sovereign rights of a teacher and those kinds of things. But we talked about that later. But this was a great, wonderful initial start. Um, I appreciate the teachers, the experts coming out and uh giving their take of um what's working, what are some challenging challenges. And our next step and and our primary job is to support them and support our kids with high levels of support. And as I mentioned earlier, with adequate resources so that we have safety nets. For example, we can't skirt the issue where we have, for example, um about twenty-four kids dropping down. The question for me becomes, what kind of safety net do we have for those kids so that they don't have to drop down, that they get, they can stay up? Because we upped our standards of levels of support. And in full disclosure, we don't have that level of support yet. But it will be coming. And so um again, thank you to the high school um led by um Principal McNally and to our um two wonderful teachers who stood in there with us all night to address the tough issues, to hear various folks' uh opinion. And this is the kind of work and grappling we need to have in order to move from really good to being great. And we become great when all folks from all walks of life are meeting standards the way we would want them to be. Um, so again, thank you.
All right, thank you. I was gonna have, you have the last word, but I see, I don't know if trustee Dos, your hand is up from earlier?
No, no, you don't get the last word. No, I get the last word.
I think it's hands up from before.
Oh, my hand, this is a new hand. I just wanted to um take a moment to uh thank the staff for for coming out in that. Um, and to say that this, these are, this is, this is a tough um topic. These are tough conversations. This is not easy work. Um, you know, if if it was easy, then we wouldn't have to have a whole uh workshop about it. But I appreciate, you know, everybody, you know, coming out and taking the time and and being willing to to have these conversations and and try and try and figure this out. So uh thank you very much for your time. Uh, you know, much appreciated and uh look forward to uh the continued uh work. Um, feel free to jump back on and and get the last, last word. Uh, but it looks like uh Dr. Shin is gonna give you a run for your money, Dr. Wells, so good luck.
Thank you. Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Dos. I'll try to make it brief. Um, I too would want to truly appreciate our teacher leaders, Principal McNally, all of our board trustees, Albany community for engaging in this um true data-driven cycle of improvement process. Um, tonight, we uh are examples to our students of what it looks like when a caring community comes together in the best interest of them. And this is the exercise that we go through when we look at data uh to for improvement. So today we uh took a look at quantitative data. We ba- began with the hard numbers. And then we moved into qualitative data when our um parents spoke passionately about their students' experience as well as our board members speaking about their experiences that po- provides the qualitative data. So along with that data, what is our next steps? What will we be doing um in order to respond to that data? Um, but before I go on to that, I would like to add a qualitative data. Um, sorry to go be long-winded, because my nephew too was in that math one-two course, uh and he chose to drop. And as his aunt, I was heartbroken, just like all of the families that came on. And I too felt a um sense of disappointment um towards the teachers until I had another follow-up conversation with him. Um, so when he decided to drop the course, my talk uh to him was about resilience and his self-esteem. I just wanted to make sure that he understood that that was not a reflection of his intelligence. That we as human beings all have just a certain amount of energy that we can dedicate and devote to certain things we want to accomplish in life. And we can't do it all. And it's okay. And it's okay for us to focus our efforts in the areas that we really truly wanna focus. And if he was, if he wants, wanted to decide that math uh being in the advanced Uh, being in the advanced math course was not the area that he wanted to put all of his energy into in order to prove that he could do it. Then that was okay. And again, no reflection on his level of intelligence or his. Ability to accomplish anything that he wants to accomplish. So that was our talk. Um, about a month later, I circled back to him and just asked him how school was going and. What, which one of his courses did he really think? Was the best course that he had engaged in. And to my surprise. He named that math one, two course that he dropped from. He said that experience in that course really helped him. Because that in that course, he had the opportunity to truly collaborate with his peers. And it felt like they started on an equal footing where they were all kind of struggling learners together. And they really had to depend on one another, kind of for survival. But it really brought them close and it really gave them the challenge and something to work towards. And that he really appreciated that experience despite the fact that he dropped out of that course. I want to let you know, we learn from children every single day, and that was the greatest learning experience for me. Um, meaning that it's really about that self concept, right? It's really about our perspective of any situation. He could have chosen to be resentful of the teacher and be resentful of the fact that he dropped out of the course, but he didn't. He focused on the positive and the learning um that came from that course. And he let me know that his self concept was not hurt by that. And he was okay, and he understood what it meant to work hard uh and to. Want to be challenged in something. Again, I tell this story because we all have different perspectives in life, in any experience that we go through. And it's really about our mindset. Anything and everything starts with our mindset, and if we're trying to shift practices. It starts with shifting our mindset. And. We all have a great responsibility and privilege in this, although our teachers have the greatest responsibility and privilege. Because they work directly with our students and they there have the ability to inspire them um on a level that many of us do not, and we're grateful for their work. But so do all of us. We all have an opportunity every single moment to uplift our students. In that moment when they're down, when they feel like they can do no more, when they feel hurt, we have a. Opportunity to talk to them and to tell them other ways of thinking, other perspectives that they can uh approach. And in that, they can shift their mindset as well. So all of us must shift our mindsets together. And show our students as an example what it means to work together collaboratively, to listen to critical feedback. It's challenging. It's tough. No one likes hearing critical feedback. I know I don't, but even after that, what will we do with that feedback? Will it, will we use it to grow? Will we use it to make things better? That's the difference. It's not what happens to us, but how we respond. That determines the strength of our character and our movement forward. And if you felt any level of conflict tonight, any level of discomfort tonight. Please know that you're moving in the right di- direction. We are at that. Breaking point of moving in a different direction of evolving. And so this conversation really started a lot of deep thoughts for me, I know, and I'm sure it has for our educators here tonight. All of us have the best intent for our students. All of us do. If it was up to the intent, we'd all be A plus students. A plus educators in this room, but unfortunately, we cannot measure ourselves by our intent, but we must measure ourselves by our impact. So what kind of impact are we having on our students? And what kind of shift do we need to make in order to have? A better impact on our students so they can have better outcomes, so they can have so a better self concept. What will we do together as a result of tonight to improve ourselves and improve outcomes for our students? That's all I want.
So we're ending on impact. Uh, thank you for that. And Trustee Dos, you were right. She gave me a run for my money.
All right, and with that, we are adjourned. I will see everyone at our regular board meeting. March, I've I've completely lost track of time. No, I will not see anybody next week. It's spring break. Uh, our next board meeting, regular board meeting is Tuesday, April twelfth. See you then. Good night.